Can you hear me now? All right. All right. I feel like that commercial. Chairman Rossler. Vice Chair Grimm. Commissioner Aguilar is absent. Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Hastings. Commissioner Looney. Commissioner Savage. Student Commissioners Casana, Rio, Herrera. And Commissioner, Student Commissioner Peter Childs. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. All right. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our July 5 meeting. If there are no, no changes to the minutes, can we hear?
Yeah, I thought the volume was a little up.
Any way to adjust the volume, Ms. Chow? Okay, all right. We have before us the July 5 minutes. If there are no changes, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes, I move approval of the minutes as written.
Okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner Savage.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from July 5. Please cast your vote. And lock it in. And the minutes pass unanimously, six to oh, of all the commissioners present, except for Commissioner Aguilar. Very good. Ms. Chow, any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes, Chairman.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is Oral Communications. This is a time that the Commission sets aside for members of the public to address the Commission on items that are not on the agenda. You need to fill out a speaker slip, and I have none. Anyone wishing to address the Commission in Oral Communications. Seeing none, we will move on to our public hearings. Let me explain the process that will happen this evening. This is a public hearing, and they are, were regulated by state law and our local ordinance. The way that you will communicate with the Commission is by filling out a speaker slip and coming and testifying. There will be no clapping, no cheering, no yelling at the applicant, no yelling at the Commission, and certainly no yelling at our staff. We, we will, you will be given three minutes. When the red light goes on, I'll ask you to wrap up your comments. I would suggest to you, we have a large number of people that want to speak tonight. If there's someone that's covered a topic, all you need to do is say, "I agree with the previous speaker on traffic." And then you can move on and cover other topics that you might not have had time for. So I'll call the first person, and I'll call the backup so they can come and sit in our on-deck circle and be ready to testify. And we'll move the hearing along as quickly as possible. I think that covers it. We're pretty well spread out tonight. If you need a mask, Ms. Chow, Ms. Chow has additional mask if you feel you need one. So you're not required to have one, from what we understand, from the city clerk's office, so. Oh, that's right. Turn your speaker slips in to our recording secretary, Mr. Rossler. This evening, he's filling in for Ms. Pressey. All right. Mr. Mang, Raffi, it's your turn. The, the floor, staff report is yours, and the floor is yours.
Sounds good. And you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Chairman Rossler, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. It is my pleasure to present to you tonight an application for a general plan amendment, zone change, tentative subdivision map, and density bonus. Project, project is located at 1205 Melrose Way for a 15-lot subdivision. Project number P21-0130. Project is located on Melrose Way. Project area is 2.55 acres across three separate parcels and is mostly vacant land with one existing single-family residence. As previously noted, proposed project consists of a request for a, for approval of a tentative subdivision map to subdivide the 2.55-acre site into 15 single-family residential lots. The project includes a request for a general plan amendment to re-designate the site from low-density residential, LD, to medium-low-density residential, MLD, to allow for a maximum density of five dwelling units per acre and a corresponding zone change from estate residential, E1, to single-family residential, R1, which requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The project also includes a request for a density bonus consistent with State Density Bonus Law, per Government Code Section 65915, which would allow the applicant to utilize one cost-saving concession in exchange for providing one very low-income residential unit. The cost-saving concession proposed is for lots to range from 3,300 to 5,700 square feet in size. The future homes are also anticipated to include two-car garages and 20-foot-wide driveways on each lot for a total of 60 parking spaces. This is an aerial photo of the project site on the left side and surrounding land uses on the right side. As you can see, there are residential land uses to the west and south, Breeze Hill Elementary and Breeze Hill Park to the east, and multifamily residential uses to the north. The existing general plan designation currently is low-density, LD. This allows for minimum half-acre-sized parcels, lots for urban agriculture, and allows for low-density residential uses up to two dwelling units per acre. The proposed general plan amendment would change the general plan designation to medium-low-density, MLD. This would allow for medium-low-density residential uses up to five dwelling units per acre and minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet or more. The existing zoning for the property is currently E1 Estate Residential. Permitted uses for this zone are animal keeping, agricultural crops, and single-family residences. The proposed zone change would change the zoning to R1 Residential. This would allow for animal keeping as well, vegetable gardening, and single-family residences. This is a proposed site plan. Private Street A is colored red. Private Street B is colored light green. Pocket Park is colored dark green. Bio Basin is colored light blue. And the single-family lots are colored dark blue. As shown here on the landscape concept plan, there will be a variety of trees and shrubs planted throughout the site, as well as along Melrose Way. Approximately 12,000 square feet of the site will be landscaped with native and non-native plant materials that require low or moderate water use. The site will only take access from Melrose Way. Private Street B will only take access from Private Street A. There will be no common access through McGovern Terrace, but there will be a locked gate for emergency access only. In regards to traffic, the SEQA threshold for a traffic study for vehicle miles traveled, VMT, is 1,000 average daily trips, ADT, and is consistent with adopted general plan. If the project is inconsistent with the general plan, then a VMT analysis will be required if the project is 500 or more average daily trips. Under the City of Vista Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines, the TIA, projects that generate less than 500 daily vehicle trips are not required to conduct a vehicle miles traveled impact analysis. In this case, the proposed project is forecast to generate 150 daily trips at full build-out. A vehicle miles traveled analysis was not required for this project. Proposed project can be implemented without impacting the operations of the surrounding roadway system. Concessions. What are concessions? Concessions can be a reduction in development standards but are tied to identifiable and actual cost reductions. Applicants shall receive one concession for projects that include at least 5% of the total units for very low-income households. The cost-saving concession being utilized for this project is minimum lot sizes. Under Government Code Section 65915, the percentage of units being provided as very low-income units would be rounded up from 6.6% to 7%. This would actually permit a density bonus of 25% for this project. However, the applicant is opting to only utilize 20% density bonus for this project than what is authorized by State Density Bonus Laws. Should the zone change be approved, the R1 zone requires at a minimum 10,000 square-foot lots for subdivision per Vista Development Code Section 18.28.060. As previously noted, per State Density Bonus Laws, the applicant would be utilizing this concession to create lots that are smaller than the required 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. This concession is being utilized because a proposed project would not otherwise be considered a viable project economically due to monetary constraints and cost-saving measures. This higher density of 5.88 dwelling units per acre and smaller lot sizes would allow more units to be constructed and sold, thus making the project more viable in return for providing one very low-income residential unit. Waivers. What are waivers? Waivers are a reduction in development standards and are granted where the development standard would physically prevent the project from being built at a permitted density and with granted concessions. The waiver or reduction of a developments, the waiver or reduction of a development standard does not count as an incentive or concession, and there is no limit on the number of development standard waivers that may be requested or granted. Development standards for waivers being utilized for this project include: Side yard setback. Per Vista Development Code Section 18.28.040, the R1 zone requires a minimum 10-foot side yard setback. The requested waiver would reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet minimum width. Rear yard setback. Per Vista Development Code Section 18.28.050, the R1 zone requires a minimum 10-foot rear yard setback for a single-story house or a 20-foot setback for a two-story house. The requested waiver would reduce the rear yard setback for a two-story house from 20 feet down to 10 feet. Minimum lot width. Per Vista Development Code Section 17.16.010C, general design requirements, each subdivided lot must maintain a minimum of 50 feet in width exclusive of side yard setback requirements in the zone in which the lot is located, measured at the building setback line. The requested waiver would reduce minimum lot width to 32 feet in width exclusive of side yard requirements. Minimum lot depth. Per Vista Development Code Section 17.16.010I, general design requirements, each subdivided lot must maintain a minimum of 90 feet in depth and shall be no greater than three times the average width. The requested waiver would reduce the minimum lot depth for some lots to be less than 90 feet in depth, and some lots would be greater than three times average width limitation. Private street width. Per Vista Development Code Section 16.57.040, private street and driveway standards, the required width for a private street is 32 feet within a 40-foot-wide road easement area. The requested waiver would reduce the minimum street width to a 24-foot paved width within a 30-foot, 35-foot road easement area. And in regards to retaining walls, per the City of Vista Landscape Manual, retaining walls greater than 5 feet in height shall be made plantable to provide full coverage of foliage from surrounding properties. The requested waiver will eliminate this requirement for a plantable retaining wall. Width of storm drain easement. Storm drain easement shall be reduced to achieve the desired lot size, thus desired density per State Density Bonus Laws. Basis for approval. The proposed use and the manner to be conducted is permitted in the applicable zone and will conform to applicable federal, state, and local laws or regulations. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan. Should the zone change be approved, Goal 2 of the land use and community identity Lucy element of the general plan promotes a preservation and enhancement of neighborhoods that share common development patterns, topography, major streets, and zoning patterns. The proposed project would provide for a new residential development consisting of lots that would be compatible with existing housing and topography in the surrounding area. Goal 9 of the Lucy element of the general plan promotes a range of housing types and sizes for a variety of incomes and ages. By providing smaller lots than the required 10,000-square-foot lots required by the R1 zone, the applicant is providing a variety of housing types and sizes for a variety of incomes and ages. The proposed project will enhance the neighborhood and provide a transition of housing types from the medium-high-density uses to the north to the low-density uses to the west and the south. This project will provide a desired transition of housing within this neighborhood. The subject site also provides adequate parking and circulation to accommodate the proposed use. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution, city council approval of a general plan amendment, zone change, and tentative subdivision map, including a density bonus for a 15-lot, single-family residential subdivision located at 1205 Melrose Way. This does conclude staff's presentation. I would like to also mention that the applicants seen is here tonight, and they would, do have a short presentation as well that they would like to present.
Okay, very good. Ladies and gentlemen, I forgot to mention that the process tonight will be a report from staff. We'll give the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation. We'll open it up then to questions from the commissioners of both the applicant and, and staff. And then I will open the public hearing. I'll call your names, come and testify. I'll close the public hearing, and that'll be the end of a public testimony, and then we'll open it up for Commissioner discussion. So Erin McKinley. Very good. And?
Is there a clicker for the presentation? Good evening. Wait for this to show up. Raffi, do you pull it up? All right. Good evening, planning commission members. Nice to see you all tonight. First time I've been back in person after COVID in front of people. Tonight, we're focusing on a rezone for the Melrose Way property. In January 2021, the proposal to rezone the property was in front of city council for approval to move forward with this application, and it was supported by Council 5.0. This property is an infill site, meaning it is not creating sprawl. It is critical, as we focus on meeting the region's housing needs, that we focus on infill development, accommodating growth in a sustainable manner, respecting existing development patterns, and helping to reduce pressures on outlying areas that aid in the protection of more sensitive lands that serve important ecological functions. The property is completely encircled by development. It is just over half a mile from Highway 78. It consists of one underutilized parcel and two vacant parcels totaling two and a half acres. The proposed development suggests a project compatible with compatible density to the surrounding zones and uses. And what is a key is that it proposes density near existing resources and existing infrastructure. The project also respects existing development patterns. There are current active uses around the property. Eastward, we have an active institutional church use, an elementary school, and a park. To the north, we have an 88-unit apartment project, and that's actually 30 units to the acre. We have commercial uses. There's a bank. And we have a 240-unit multifamily project that is 15 units to the acre. We also have a 221-unit apartment project that is 32 units to the acre. To the west is a low-density residential, two units to the acre, and medium-low-density residential, five units to the acre. The proposed 15-lot project on 2.5 acres equates to a density of 5.8 units to the acre, and that is clearly compatible with the surrounding uses. The project plans for workforce housing. One of the key indicators for that success is walkability. The property allows for easy walking access to school and several parks, including Breeze Hill Park, Lake Park, Oak Riparian Park. There are also several walkable grocery options, Vista Farmer's Market, Food for Less, and Ralph's. Additionally, the Civic Center Sprinter Line is only 1.2 miles away, easily bikeable, and with bus routes available only .2 miles away. This property has all the hallmarks of an appropriate site to intensify density to help meet the region's housing needs. Intensify and density, these are words that make communities nervous. A lot of what we will likely hear from opposition on the project will center around nostalgia and a desire for no change, to keep things as they are. Nostalgia is a strong emotion, a visceral one and an understandable one. But as much as we want to freeze time, the reality is that time only moves forward. The reality is that growth in the community is happening, and we as a community need to identify the most suitable locations to help intelligently absorb that need with the appropriate density that meets the need to respond to the imminent pressure for housing. the appropriate density that meets the need to respond to the imminent pressure for housing but also balances what's compatible with the existing established community. Tonight, we will be looking at a project that proposes a transitional use in zone between estate residential and higher-density multifamily and civic uses. This project is not proposing blocks of high-rise apartments. This project isn't even multifamily. What this project proposes is a much more palatable transition to the use of small, single-family lots, requesting a zoning of R1 to create lots for single-family workforce housing in place of what would otherwise be sprawling estate lots. There are lots of benefits to the community and to the city with regards to smaller lots. Smaller lots promote end-user affordability. The cost of land in this county is astronomical, and a smaller lot requires less land, reducing the land basis and allowing the price points that reach workforce housing needs. It also allows for lower maintenance than estate lots for the end user, better for active adults, retirees, young families, or anyone wanting to keep their ongoing housing maintenance costs down such as landscaping and watering. It creates more property tax income for the city, and this project has private street, which is maintained by the HOA, so it's not a burden on the city. It also creates a natural transition between the higher density and intensity of civic and multifamily uses to the east and north, to the sprawling estate lots to the west and south. We all know that we need to create more attainable workforce housing. This is the right location for small lots to help fill that need. It's the right-sized transition between uses, and the infrastructure is in place, and the site plan has been laid out with the intent to be as least impactful to as few people as possible. The proposed development directly abuts only four estate residential properties, and only one of those fours has a structure that is adjacent to the shared property line. We'll illustrate how buffer areas naturally exist for this site, and just how little the proposed density will physically affect the adjacent neighbors. I've highlighted in yellow the underused portions of the neighboring lots, i.e. not their backyards or pools or active use is regular, but the undeveloped portion of the lot that helps serve is an existing buffer between their structure and the project's property line. In addition to this buffer, these properties are further set back by the private drive in the north portion of the property and by the project's rear yards outside the building pad area in the southern portion of the property. Even the one neighbor whose structure is closest to the shared property line in the very south is actually gaining an improved setback from the existing house on the site now. The next concern we typically confront on any and all development projects is the influence of additional vehicles in the community. This project, however, is very well positioned to be minimally impactful, first and foremost, existing infrastructure. This is a prime example why infill projects are the most environmentally conscious and best way to intelligently intensify density. The decision to create a transitional zone and intensify density in an analytical and measured way at a location that can support it is essential. The property is only half a mile from Highway 78. The impact on collector and neighborhood roads is minimal. The main nearest intersection is Melrose Way and Melrose Drive, and per the City of Vista's traffic congestion management plan, the level of service at that intersection is rated an A. That's the best rating it can receive, and it's clearly well-positioned to manage the 15 new homes. In addition to the existing infrastructure, the project proposes an onsite cul-de-sac with only emergency access for only emergency vehicles on McGraven Drive. This serves to not only keep McGraven Drive from being impacted by additional trip generation, but more importantly, it improves the safety for those existing residents by creating a more direct route for fire service, improving response times to those existing homes. The project also improves the frontage along Melrose Way, extending the sidewalk, which is useful for drop-off and pickup for Breeze Hill Elementary, helping expand a safe walking path for the children. With regards to parking, every home will have a two-car garage and two parking spaces in the driveway, and CCNR restrictions can be imposed to require parking in the homes' garages. The project is being proposed to create small-lot, single-family, which is complementary transitional use between existing zones. The calculation to 15 lots is derived from utilizing R1 zoning and applying the state density bonus to assure that moderately-priced, missing-middle homes, as well as a deed-restricted affordable home, are assured in this project. The goal is first-time home buyers, workforce housing, and the missing middle. In place of two giant estate residential lots, we want to provide 15 homes and more affordable index in a location that, when viewed analytically and not through the lens of nostalgia, is incredibly well-suited to embrace it. These will be beautiful new homes that will complement the community and be a charming transition between uses. We hope that you can support this vision for the future of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for staff or Ms. McKenney? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Rafi. The next-to-last slide used the term "desired transition." Explain that.
On your presentation?
Yeah, it was on the city slide, not yours.
What page?
Next-to-last page. The next-to-last slide. Used the term "desired transition." Is that a, do you mean the transition between density and lower density or higher density or?
So the transition between the land uses of the north being the higher-density land uses, that's where you have your apartment complexes, and the lower-density uses of the south and the west, which is the E1, two dwelling units per acre land uses. The proposed project would be a transition between both those land use areas if it was approved for the 15-unit subdivision.
When you say "desired," desired by whom? The city?
It would be a desired transition of land uses.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't know if that clarifies. Sorry.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yeah, this one's, would be for Rafi. Do you know or remember when the last general plan amendment update was?
I do not know. I think it's Patsy.
2012. And was this property considered to be, have the land use made to a higher density at that time?
I believe the, it was identified as it is currently, not, not what is being designated for or proposed for. So it would have, it's the existing status right now. That was identified back in 2012.
Okay. And also, there were two attempts, I think in the staff report, you said one in 2003 and one in 2016 to increase the density, and my understanding is both of those failed, right?
Are you referring to the background from the city council hearings?
Yes. I'm referring to page, bottom of page two and I think the top of page three.
Yeah, so the background was on November 6, 2007, planning commission held a public hearing to consider a request for a general plan amendment. Back then, that was under PC 19-063. Looks like there was no decision rendered due to continuance of the property owner's request. Back then, they were requesting to do a higher-density land use zone change. In August 2016, city council discussed preliminary requests for a general plan amendment to redesignate the property to high-density residential, which would allow the residential development of 21 units per acre. That was a discussion item. Proposed project included 54-unit condos. Staff did not, let me see here. City council confirmed with consensus about 4-0, Aguilera absent. January 26, 2021, city council discussed a preliminary request by the applicant to amend the general plan land use again from low-density LD to this, this case, MLD, medium-low-density residential. And at that point, that's a project you have before you today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Rafi, this is for you. It was presented by the applicant that the city council voted 5 to 0 to move this forward. Is that what had happened with city council's preliminary view of the application?
I don't have the vote for that specific one. I believe it was just a discussion item. I don't think a vote was taken.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney? It was just a discussion item, so there is no vote, and it's just a discussion item.
Okay, it was presented that there was a vote, and that's why I was just wanting to confirm. Thank you.
But the applicant was directed to go ahead and submit their application, if I remember.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Very good. Rafi, the waivers and the concessions that they're asking for all come out of the new state laws dealing with affordable housing.
Correct.
And the city's hands are somewhat tied. If they offer up an affordable unit, then they get to play with all the development standards. That's why so many waivers.
If they do apply for a concession, they do have a density bonus allowance, they would qualify for waivers from development standards. That is correct.
Okay.
I can let Amanda here elaborate, though, if she would like to.
Amanda Guy, Deputy City Attorney. Page four of the general report provides the standard on which the planning commission considers the concessions and waivers, and the circumstances under which the planning commission could deny those. They are very limited, but those are laid out in the staff report.
Very good. There are a lot of them. Commissioners, Commissioner Hasing?
I had a sort of a specific question about the, for the applicant, about the affordable housing and how that house would be determined as being the affordable housing. Is it going to be different from the rest of the houses?
When we do density bonus projects, the, the affordable housing must be in light kind to what else you are building. So from the outside, it does not look any different at all. It can be on whatever lot the city would select. So no, it should look and feel and live like all of the other homes. It is required to be as such, if I'm correct.
My next question was, where would it be located? It's not going to be the one off in the corner on the smallest lot.
Well, we can work with the city, we can work with the city to identify which lot, if they have a preference.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, this is a question for the applicant. Once this is designated, then it stays that way forever. They can't sell it for something different. They can't change it later on, so it becomes part of the deed. Is that correct?
Our deed is strict for 55 years, and there is a very heavy process that you have to go through with the city when selecting either a renter or a buyer for it, depending on which route that goes, if it becomes a renter-occupied unit or a sale to a low-income.
A renter-occupied, so this could be renters and not buyers?
It can go either way. In, in my opinion, it works very well for renters, because then you are constantly having the right income of a person in that unit, so you're constantly serving the need.
So if renter A, who is, who qualifies, should leave, the deed protects that from somebody who is not qualified, correct?
Correct, and it has a process.
And it's for 55 years. But it could be a rental.
It could be a rental, or it could be a for-sale. Either way, it's restricted for 55 years that it goes to a low-income owner or renter.
But all, all the rest of these houses are owner-occupied, or are they going to be rented?
The owner of the property now intends to build them and sell them as workforce housing, so I believe he intends to sell the affordable unit as well. Whoever buys the affordable unit can either choose to live in it or choose to rent it as long as it is affordable.
But somebody could buy all of those houses and just rent them?
I don't believe there's any controls within the city as to, to have anything to do with that.
So it would be up to whoever owns the homes to make that determination.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We'll now go and open our public hearing. Chris Robbins, followed by Amanda Olivas.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm disappointed to have to be here. I've got a lot of other things I wish I was doing tonight. I've had to come to other meetings regarding this specific property at 1205 Melrose Way. Ms. McKenney mentioned some nostalgia for the past, but the property at 1205 Melrose Way has been in disarray and is an eyesore in the community, and I've driven past it every day for 22 years, and, and believe me, I don't have any nostalgia for what it looks like. 1205 Melrose Way is in quite disarray, but when I first saw that he was going to redevelop it, Zoran Jovanovic, who I'm not sure is actually here tonight, Ms. McKenney is representing him, but I'm not sure Zoran is here. The, the property is 2.55 acres, and I initially thought he was going to build five estate properties, meeting the existing zoning, and it would improve the property values within the area. Disappointing to realize that instead he was going to request the zoning change and change it to 15 properties. It, it further worries me that SB 9 offers additional properties on site so people can build additional properties on a residential site, and so what may be starting out as 15 units could be 30 units before we know what's going on. Additionally, as we, as Commissioner Garretson pointed out, I worked with Commissioner Garretson on Park and Rec previously, he had a good line of questioning. There's nothing that prevents the property owner from renting the units, and I'm going to say this, and I don't like to have to say this, but Mr. Jovanovic, he owns a property adjacent to my property, the one at 1205, he owns several. He's not a good landlord. Let's make sure I make that really clear. He is not a good landlord. He has people that rent his properties that are a little unsavory, that require police presence, sheriff departments out. If you want to look through the actual police calls, which you can pull from sheriff's records, if I need to come back again, I can do a public records act and get those things. Zoran Jovanovic is not a good landlord. I want to make that really clear. I'm a little disappointed in seeing all the waivers that were put in place. And lastly, the basis for approval that the, that the city put up, that, that last page had several falsehoods, lies, whatever you want to call them, enhancements to the community. I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing that I'm going to have an enhancement when there's 15 properties built on my street and the construction crews drop a box of nails and I get a flat tire because of it. We, I went to this community, I bought this house because it was estates. I liked it. A lot of my neighbors here I know like it that way, and I think we'd like to keep it that way. And I wish, I hope, that you will listen to the neighborhood and not the person that lives somewhere else and owns these properties but doesn't live there and isn't one of our neighbors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Amanda Oliveras? Yeah, followed by Christine Manser? Did I get that right?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. My name is Amanda Olivas. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I am speaking in support of this project for many reasons. As a Realtor, I've seen firsthand over the last several years particularly the lack of supply met with high demand for housing, which in turn causes a very much rising prices. And one of the ways to combat those rising prices is to increase inventory. I do think this project is a very cohesive, from what I've seen, cohesive transition of the- of the different uses in the surrounding area. Also, anytime you have development, you do have an increase of property values in the surrounding area. So I do think in the long term, this will benefit the neighbors. Additionally, when you have development, this will require specific street improvements, including but not limited to, as we saw, sidewalk along Melrose Way, as well as whatever is required by the city for streetlights and/or stop signs, which in turn increases the safety for the children walking to school, families walking to the adjacent church as well. The population of Vista increases at approximately 1,000 people per year. There are currently 107 homes for sale, single-family homes on the market in Vista. That means about 10% of the increasing population has the opportunity to purchase a home. I do know that the change can be scary. I sympathize with the neighbors that they, you know, want to keep the aesthetic of their neighborhood. But anytime you have increase in population, growth is inevitable, and we need homes for people to live in. And I think low-to-medium-income families should have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, followed by Clara McMillan?
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Christine Manier. I own the property right adjacent to 1205 Melrose Way. Mr. Zoran has been lying to us, our neighbors, since he bought that property 15, 16 years ago. I don't remember. Originally, his plan was to put three nice homes on that property. He wanted all of us to sign for it, come back before the commissioner, and all of a sudden it was 50 apartments, or 50 condos. Then the last one was going to be 96 condos. He is not part of our community. He does not live there. There is not a housing shortage in this area. There's a gouging problem. You have apartments that you just put up behind us, which traffic has increased immensely down our street. I have a daycare. My neighbors across the street have a daycare. Chris Robbins, his wife has a daycare. People fly down that road all the time. Now bringing 15 more homes in, that's more traffic. The school can't even take care of the kids they have. Now they're over, they're overbooked. You talk about, we have to cut electricity because our grid, you're putting 15 more houses there. Our water, we're short on that. All of a sudden, we have more water and electricity for all these homes? The apartments, like I said, that were built behind us, people can't afford to rent those houses because the rent is so high. It's not that there's a housing shortage. People cannot afford to rent, nor can they afford to buy a house right now. It's, it's high. That's the problem. And then putting 15 houses right next to me, I've been in my house 22 years. I bought 22 years ago because we are estate housing. It's nice. It's quiet. Now I'm going to have seven and a half backyards up against my property line, two stories, whatever, looking into my yard. Like I said, I have a daycare. There's more, and as Chris pointed out also, it starts at 15 houses. Well, now with the new granny flats that you can put in there, it can turn into 30 houses. And people are going to buy those houses and rent them out. We'll have, I'm not saying all of them will be rented out, but a lot of them will be rented out. You'll have four or five families living in those homes. If you look around a lot of those other neighborhoods, you have four or five families living in one house because they can't afford the rent. We don't want that. We don't need that many people. You can improve that property by building five nice homes over there. And again, I, I, it's the construction, that's, that's ruining our way of life. There's no nostalgia. It has nothing to do with nostalgia. It's our way of life. It's our neighborhood. And again, Zoran does rent out the house right next to me. The people there love him. They're great. They've been there forever. He gouges them. For that little place, he gouges them. He gouges the people on the other side. And Chris is right. He don't care who he rents to half the time. I'm sorry. This is just upsetting. This is the third time we've, this is the third time we're here for this.
Alright.
Keep the zoning, five houses, and we'll be happy. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McMillan? Followed by Ben Williams?
Good evening. I am standing here in support of the project as a working, single parent. I do believe that I would benefit from affordable, not housing, but to be able to buy property. I currently rent right here down the street. It's me and my three children in a one-bedroom apartment. We've been there since 2016. It's really difficult to find any property at all that I could afford as a single parent. I, I think Zoran's goal and approach is something that I would benefit from, and so I'm in support of that.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Williams?
Hello, city and neighbors. Thank you very much for letting me speak in behalf of this project. I am in favor of the project, and I do understand the neighbors' concerns, you know, to have change. And everybody likes things to be the same. I wish things could be the same.
Mr. Williams? You need to, you need to address me.
Oh, I apologize.
This isn't an open forum on the project. You need to tell this commission what your concerns about the project are.
Well, my concerns aren't so much as being in favor of the project. I do recognize the neighbors' concerns. I hear what they're saying, that they're afraid that there's going to be rentals that are going to go out of control. My understanding is that it's an HOA, and so my understanding of an HOA is that it's very well behaved. It's managed, and it will prevent that. Times change, you know, density is, is needed. I heard somebody else talk about SB 9, which allows people to split properties. So these properties could, as they are, go from five to 10 automatically. So it's just the spirit of how things are evolving. We're needing more density. My parents drove a Fleetwood Brown Cadillac back in the day, and that just doesn't work. We need smaller things. We need smaller housing. And it's just what people need. They need this smaller housing. And I'm in favor of letting people do what they want to do with their land. I'm glad to see that he's building houses and not condos. And for those people that are not in favor of this, they might be in favor of it just for the sake of making sure there's houses there and not, you know, condos in the future with another developer. I think it's very well planned out, where its road is on the side with the church and the school, so it's not going to create traffic to the neighbors on the other side. If they were larger homes, they're more likely to have multiple families live in a larger home with a larger lot. The smaller homes are going to be less likely to have multiple families and packing into there. I think people are going to fit into a certain amount of space, whether it's two homes or one large home. So I'm in favor of the project. I think it makes a lot of sense. It transitions nicely from bigger homes on one side to these condos on the other, to have something medium in between. And I think it's the right thing to do for the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Enteni? Did I get that, was I close?
Close, very close. Lauren Etten. I live on the corner of Melrose and Melrose Way. I've lived there for a little over 30 years. And I'm not opposed to houses in that area. I'm opposed to the quantity of houses. Melrose Way, or Marcella is the only thorough street from the school to be able to get back down to the freeway. Alright? You're talking about 350 car transports a day across in front of that school, alright? That's a lot of traffic. Five houses in there, that wouldn't be that much traffic. My house, the corner I'm on, I get between 25 and 35 or 40 cars every morning, between five to eight and 10 after eight, because of the parents who drop their kids off at school. They don't have buses. There's also two 84-passenger buses that go down and go around my corner every morning, and they go around every afternoon to pick the kids, to pick the kids up. And my objection to the project is not the project, the quantity of houses that would be in the project. Because another 350 car travels a day is going to be way, way, a lot of traffic going in front of that school every day. There's no parking for the people picking up their students. That parking lot's not big enough for the people to get in there and park. They're parked up and down both sides of Melrose. They're parked in the dirt because there's no way to park there. They park in the parking for the park that's behind the school, and the kids have to walk around to get to that. So again, my objection's not to having houses there. It's the quantity of the houses and the traffic. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Alright, that is my last speaker slip. I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Floor's yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maria Martin. I am a Realtor in San Diego County. I have been for over 15 years. I'm also associated with the Women's Council of Realtors of San Diego. So I'm a very upstanding and law-abiding citizen, and I know Zoran personally, and I know that he has the utmost taste and top-notch when he does things. So I personally and professionally do not think that he's going to cut corners with this. I think that what he proposes is very average as far as the size of the home and the condition and the lot size that it's going to be. I understand when he bought this property that the zoning was different, but again, times have changed. The density in the area has changed, and it's not out of line with what's already in the area. It definitely conforms to what's in the area. It's a very family-friendly area as far as the schools, the churches, the restaurants, what the community offers, and I feel like this will complement it. In addition to, there is a lack of homes and properties in San Diego County, and that is what is contributing to the high prices. It's all about supply and demand. So when you offer more supply, the demand is going to increase. It's going to help with the cost of rentals. It's going to help with the cost of the homes in general. That's why we're starting to see a balance in the housing market, as far as it's not just a seller's market right now. So as far as him gouging, this project is costing him millions of dollars, and he is a personal property owner that is putting his own money out to better the community. And he also has a right, as a property owner, to use his property to the utmost and highest and best use that it can offer. And it's not of line. It's not condominiums. It is single-family homes. They're going to benefit the community. And that's all I'd like to mention this time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. So that is my last speaker slip. Alright, the public hearing is closed, and I'm opening it up to Commissioner Discussion. While they're figuring out what they want to ask, let me ask this. Rafi, it was mentioned ADUs. Do we know in this whole process if ADUs would be allowed?
None are proposed at this time, but once any single-family home is built, they would be allowed to have an ADU per state laws.
Okay, alright. And the thing that bothers me, well, there's several things that bother me about it. I think, I think we're getting one unit and asking for a whole ton of waivers and one concession, and that really bothers me. But in the mitigated negative declaration, it's, we answer yes, that the project's consistent with the general plan because the site design and landscape architecture meets or exceeds all design standards and guidelines. And I, there isn't architecture and there are no floor plans that have been presented to us, and I'm having a hard time saying yes to that, to that question. And I, I think the neighborhood deserves to at least see what the project's going to look like before, before it gets built. So anyway, that's my, that's my concern. Commissioner Grimm?
Thank you. The developer's representative had mentioned compatibility, and there are a lot of points she made to back that up. You have had a lot of apartments come in there. You've had other uses that have come in over time. One of the problems I have, however, is that, and I, I don't remember which lady said it, but she's the one right next door, and she's going to have almost seven full lots backing up against her single-family lot. And that's a concern for me. Also, and Commissioner Rossler, you know, alluded to this, but with the huge, you know, and it is a very big density increase over what has been considered before and, you know, in some cases actually denied. There's, I think, seven waivers on the property, and then on top of that, there's, well, as part of that, there's, there's the density bonus as well. So you've got a situation where you're getting a very large increase, and you have to kind of look around and say, well, what is the city getting in return for that? And it's not just a compatibility issue, but we're getting, we're getting one, one unit. And I'm not sure that makes sense to me to have that much increase in density and we're getting one affordable housing. So anyway, that's, that's, I have several concerns, but those are the ones I wanted to articulate.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
I just wanted to give a little more information to the planning commissioners about the ADUs. State allows a maximum of 1,200 square feet for a detached accessory dwelling in it. The side yards and rear yards of those structures are five feet from the property line. And every single-family property has right to build one of these. So it's, I think Commissioner Grimm, what you were saying, that they're asking for an increase of density, but that could almost be, not quite doubled, if each one of them builds an accessory dwelling in it.
Commissioner Hastings?
I think this project is important overall to the city, the idea of the project, because we really do have a need for infill. And so the question arises, as the speakers have said, is this the appropriate place for that infill? So I'm sitting here chewing on that, you know, is, it's kind of scary to think that 15 goes to 27 or whatever it might with ADUs. And what does that do to the character of the property? And how, how do you accommodate that, both from our sense of Vista as a place with lots of room to the requirements that the city and the county and the state have for places for people to live? So I'm being real helpful here by asking a question, to which I don't have a really good answer. So I'm, that's what I'm going to say right now.
Commissioners, one thing I forgot to, to mention at the beginning of the hearing, because there's a general plan and a zone change involved with the project, it's legislative. So our job tonight is, on both of these projects that we have, is to make a So our job tonight is, on both of these projects that we have, is to make a recommendation to the City Council. So, and for the neighbors, this project will be going on to the City Council. So whatever we decide tonight is a recommendation to, to the council. There was one other thing I wanted to ask about. No, that one's it. So Commissioner Looney?
Along that note, if a zone change is made, the concessions, the waivers could be approved. And then we are allowing substandard lots, we are allowing substandard street widths, and the value of the adjacent properties are going to be affected in a negative manner because they're state properties. I'm not willing to sacrifice the value of existing homeowners for one project to be approved. So I, I'm not going to be in support of this project.
Commissioner Savage?
Yeah, just my initial concern is that this property has been, through applications, for whatever density will fit, whatever will get approved. And it doesn't feel like this is with the best interest of the community around. My concern primarily is that the neighbors, you know, get something that adds value to their community. Like you were saying, the value of the property, we don't want to degrade it. And the waivers, I mean, I'm just reiterating what you've all said, but it's the fact that the ADUs can fit on those properties, I mean, this just feels like an opportunity for, for increasing the profit from this property. And I don't think that that's, you know, the owner knew what they were doing when they purchased this property. It was zoned a certain way, and if, you know, if they want to move forward with developing multiple properties, I don't feel like this is the, the direction to go. It's obviously against public support, and it's going to degrade the properties. I mean, the waivers alone, I, I just feel like, I feel like this is something that, yeah, I mean, I agree, we do need more housing, but I agree with everybody else, just wanted to state it, so.
And Commissioner Garretson?
I would say that there's so much about this property that's a concern. The term transition obviously bothers me, that it's transitioning from same density to much higher density. And all the waivers, and to me, there's only one way to stop it all, and that's to approve none of, to not approve the zone change, which I will be in support of not approving it.
Very good. Commissioner Grimm?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple more things real quick. One, I'm not necessarily opposed to some higher density on, on the property. You know, your arguments about it being some transition, I just think what's being proposed is, is too much. And I guess my last question would be, I guess, to staff would be, what are the options? Does the developer have the ability, if they want to continue the item? Do you need a straight approval or denial on the item?
We can certainly ask the applicant as to their position, but you certainly have options as far as continuing the item, making a decision tonight as far as a recommendation, whether to approve, recommend approval or recommend denial, so that it moves forward to City Council. But if you have a particular preferred way of doing it, we can request the applicant to speak, whether they would be, you know, supporting of that idea or not, or what their concerns may be at that point, so it gives them the ability to speak on that as well.
Ms. McKinnon? It, it seems like the commissioners are struggling tonight with your project, and would you, I will leave it to you, would you like a continuance so you could go redesign to address the concerns that you've heard here? Or the other option is to deny, recommend denial to the council, and you can move forward and discuss the project with them.
We're going to go ahead and move with the decision today and head to City Council.
Okay, very good.
Commissioner Rossler?
Yes.
I just want to add, if the commission wishes to move forward with recommending denial of the project, so not going with staff recommendation, currently, starting at page 155 of your packet, is the project resolution with staff's recommendation. So what we would need is a motion and approval of that motion with amended findings that support denial for that first piece with respect to the general plan amendment and zoning change.
I'm, I'm reading quickly here.
If you want a continuance, it would be, you know, appropriate to, to do that, if you need some time to look at the resolution.
I think, I think that the commission is at the point where we would, we would like to make a, deny the project, but make a recommendation to the, to the council. Commissioners, I think I'm okay with a medium-low density designation. I could see a street of 10,000 square foot lots along that edge, and I think that would be compatible with, with the neighborhood. The lots would be big enough, they wouldn't have to be two-story, they could do a, a single-story. So, so maybe what we need to do is say that we're, we're okay with the general plan amendment to medium-low density, we're okay with the, the zone change to R1, but we should deny the, the tentative map and the applicant, or the proposal for the affordable housing. Commissioner Looney?
If we make a zone change, that still opens up the floodgate of a lot of concessions.
Okay.
And I, I think your point, Amanda, is well-taken. In one of the slides, Rafi, that you had mentioned is, you had different goals. One of the goals, goal number two was the preservation of the neighborhood. Goal number nine was a various range of housing types. I don't see where those fit, and Amanda, I'm not sure what words to use that gets us around that issue, but then.
So I think.
I don't see the compatibility at all.
So everything you're mentioning are, are the type of information that staff would need to make those amended findings? So I would attempt to disarticulate in a motion which of these goals you believe are not supported and why that is. So you are pointing out reasons such as, you know, goal number two, it says we need to promote the preservation enhancement of neighborhoods, so you could say why you may not believe that is substantiated, et cetera. So we just need that information so we can have the findings be substantiated in the resolution. That makes, and it's difficult to do this sometimes on the fly, so it may take some time for you to work, work through it.
And that could be done as a commission, as, as all of us.
So it needs to be a motion that's supported by a majority of the commission.
So on one page, on page 158 of the, in the resolution, it says the site is suitable for the proposed density of the development, and we don't believe that's, that's true. It's not suitable. The lot sizes are not compatible with the lot sizes in the neighborhood, and we don't have, the design of the subdivision is, isn't compatible, again, with the, the neighborhood.
Thing two, we've got substandard streets.
Okay.
And that's not compatible.
Adequate for the property. You want to give it a go?
Sure. Okay. Well, do we need more than that, or do we just need one or two reasons?
I would include any and all reasons that would substantiate the denial.
I think one of the other items, again, goal number two, the new residential development consisting of lots that would be compatible with existing housing, that is not presented in this application, where it doesn't, it is not compatible with existing housing in the adjacent properties. So I would add that.
And I know this is difficult, but going one step further and providing why you believe that is the case.
Properties to the east, properties to the south, and properties to the west are all significantly larger in square foot pads than what is being proposed on the tentative subdivision map.
Okay, another one might be that the design of the subdivision and improvements included therein are not adequate to handle the, the traffic and other services generated by the
Any others, commissioners?
Yeah, I think we probably need to have one on the density. Did you have one, Beth?
No, I'm just agreeing with the density one.
Okay. The density, the increased number of units allowed through the increased density would not be compatible with existing single-family R1 land uses.
Ewan?
Ewan, I'm sorry.
Even in, in, on page 156, number two, it, it says that although the project will provide smaller lots inconsistent with the general plan medium-low density designation, I think that's, and the fact that we go on and say that the, that the, is consistent with nearby residential land use with compatible architecture or features in landscaping, and we can't say that. We don't have a site development plan that has a site plan and architecture, so I think that, that's another reason. Okay, Charlie, you want to, you want to give it a shot?
Okay, the planning commission, I'm, let me think about this second. Recommendation, looking to Amanda to help me out here, the plant.
I can help get the motion started. So I believe you want to say, I move to recommend to the City Council denial of, in cite the resolution and provide the rationale.
Okay, and we're, be the same resolution number, we're just changing it, right? Okay, I would move that we adopt resolutions, resolution 20.
So not, not adopt, apologies, say, I move that we.
We prepare.
We recommend to the City Council denial of the general plan amendment zone change and tentative subdivision map, including a density bonus.
Okay.
For the following reasons.
Yes, so, yeah, hard to believe, I used to do this where I lived. Yeah, yeah, so moved.
Do we have a second?
We, we need the rationale to be laid out. So we can help you with that, because we've been taking notes, but if you could take a stab at, at the reasons that have been, and Rafi, I don't know if you could offer them, and you could just second what he's.
Can, the problem is now I got to find it.
Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Would you like me to summarize part of what I heard and written down?
If you have taken notes, please.
I don't mind taking a stab at it, and you can certainly.
Go ahead.
Along the way. So in addition to what Ms. Guy was saying as far as a recommendation of denial to the City Council for the following reasons, as far as the not being able to make the findings related to the general plan, issues of compatibility not being compatible with the existing housing in the neighborhood, based on the existing housing to the east, south, and west, that are, the homes are much larger or not in line with what's being proposed. Also, the design improvements that are being proposed are not adequate to handle the traffic that's being generated by the project, and also the absent site development as far as design, not, not adequate as far as the improvements associated with the project. Those are some of the notes that I have, and if you'd like to add other things to it.
I think that pretty well covers it. Commissioners? Yep. That's fine. Okay, so those are the findings that we're going to make, and Commissioner Grimm has made the motion based on those findings. So do we have a second? Commissioner Garretson?
I second that motion.
All right, and cast your vote, a yes is for denial. And lock your vote in. And the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Aguilar's absence. We're going to take a little five-minute break while staff switches out, and folks can stick around for the next hearing if you'd like, or you can make your way to the exit. Yes.
Applies to the next one.
Yes, almost, almost happening.
Just down the line for that one part.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Good evening. We'll come back to order. Our next public hearing is Camino Largo, Cal West Communities. Ms. Chow, I believe the staff report's yours.
Good evening Chairman Russler, Commissioners Patsy Chow, I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development, City Planner. Pleased to be here this evening to present to you this public hearing item. It's a general plan amendment, a zone change, a site development plan, and a tentative subdivision map request for Project Camino Largo. So just to give you a little bit of background regards to the project, back in October of 2017, the Planning Commission recommended to the city council an approval of an annexation request at the subject site. That was also accompanied by a request for a tentative subdivision map and a zoning change, pre-zoning to A1, which is an agriculture zone. The, the size of the project at that time that was proposed was for eight lot, single-family residential subdivision. Am I echoing really bad, can you hear, is there a echo sounder? Are you good? Okay, thank you. And in December of 2017, the city council approved a tentative map for the eight lots, single-family subdivision, and they also directed staff to move forward with an application to LAFCO for the annexation of the subject site. About a year later, in November of 2018, LAFCO approved the reorganization, the annexation for the eight single-family lots. So time passes, and unfortunately, the property owners were not able to secure a developer interested to develop the site for eight lots. So about three years, or less than three years, we've received the request from California West Communities to engage in a discussion with the city council for preliminary general plan amendment and a zone change, and that happened in June of 2021. The proposal at that time was for 48 single-family lots at the subject site. And in August, same year, 2021, California West Communities then submitted formally through the city for a proposed project for 46 single-family dwelling units after receiving, staff actually receiving direction from the city council at the June meeting to move forward and receiving a proposed project, as it was discussed during the June meeting with the city council. And therefore, California West Community, West Communities pursued the project, and we received formally the project, and fast forward, a year later, this is where we're at today. So the project is before you tonight, for recommendation to the city council. So the proposed project, again, as mentioned, a general plan amendment, zone change, a site development plan, tentative map on this 9.3 acre parcel to be for 46 single-family dwelling units. The proposed density is at 4.95 dwelling units per acre. The project site and the proposed project includes drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, all of the associated infrastructure, private streets, the cul-de-sac streets, the total parking spaces to be provided for this project would be 230, for 230 vehicles. 92 spaces would be required and provided in the two car garages for each of the residences. And 92 uncovered spaces would be also required, provided on the driveways for gas parking for the particular homes, and there was also be a distribution of on-street parking, a total of 46 spaces, and so that would equal the 230 altogether. There'll be common private open space areas provided as part of the project, which I'll be showing later on in the slide. And there is one large open space park area that's kind of open field with benches and picnic tables, et cetera, lighting for safety. So just to put this project in, in perspective as far as the small lot residential development, which is something that the commission is familiar with, was approved recently by city council, adopted as an ordinance in May of this year. So it is now part of our development code, and it's called the Small Lot Residential Development Ordinance. Essentially, the intent of that is promotion, promotion of homeownership, single-family dwelling, development, expanding basically owner occupancy, owner-occupied housing opportunities within Vista for individuals that are trying to buy a home here. So that's the basic intent of it. And this particular project is utilizing the small lot residential development requirements in order to achieve what they're proposing tonight as part of the project. The small lot residential development would be applicable in the R1B zone, which is typically a minimum 6,000 square foot lot, the RM, which is up to 15 dwelling units per acre residential zones located throughout the city. So this particular project is actually asking for a zone change to R1B. The minimum lot size that comes for a small lot residential development is 3,600 square feet, a minimum lot width of 45, and a cul-de-sac minimum lot width of 20 feet, all of which are being met by this particular project. The sidewalks, as far as six-foot wide landscape parkways are provided on both sides of the street, and that's what's included in the project. There's also on-street parking that's provided on both sides of the street as private cul-de-sac streets, where there's a minimum curb-to-curb width of 40 feet to accommodate the on-street parking and allow for fire access as well. The common open space requirement in the small lot ordinance is 200 square feet per unit, and that equates to 9,200 square feet combining to one area. The proposed lot has Lot B, which is approximately 14,000 square feet, so they are well above the requirement for common open space. The private open space, about 200 square feet per unit with a minimum dimension of 10, 10 feet, and that's what they're including as part of the project for each house. And they are aware of the fact that stormwater basins are not counted towards meeting this requirement, so that is actually not happening in this project, they are meeting it as it should. They actually have an underground vault, vault stormwater underneath Lot B, and that's why they're being able to utilize the surface space as being the open space area. Their driveways obviously are strating access from the private streets, a minimum 20 feet long, and that's what they currently show. And they have also provision of storage inside the garages, the 160 cubic feet of inclosable storage, which is above the car, where the car would be parked in the garage itself for each of the units. So the existing zoning, as we know, it is A1, which is agricultural zone, it's one dwelling unit per acre. The existing designation for the general plan is rural residential. The proposed project before you is, again, to change it to R1B, and that's with the small lot development requirements, as I just previously explained in the previous slide. And then the proposed land use designation, designation is to medium density at 10 dwelling units per acre. Oh, just one thing, oops, now I need to go back. Let me see, right here. Around, surrounding uses is the residential to the north, northeast to the south, and you also have Gohomi Park and the Antique Steam Manger Museum across the street, North Santa Fe. And further, as you, the residential to the south, you also have, as you are all aware, the sandalwood development that was approved in the late 80s through a specific Plan 17, and the lot sizes there range from 4,000 square feet all the way to 11,000 square feet. There's a majority of them around 4,000, hovering around 4,000, 5,000 square feet. The land use zoning map shown here, just reiterating quickly, the rural residential where the site is identified as one dwelling unit per acre. To the south of it, you have the two dwelling units per acre, low density, and then the sandalwood development, which is at the medium density at 10 dwelling units per acre. Across the street is Parks and Rec, basically is the, where the park is, Gohomi Park is. And just the, to the left of that, the drawing identifying the, the yellow area is just the, the zone as A1, existing right now. The lavender color further to the south, that's the sandalwood development. So this is a picture of the project site, just looking at it in a northeasterly direction, and the nursery that's no longer in operation. This is another view, looking north Santa Fe, looking southeast directly at the project site. This is the tentative subdivision map and showing the, for the cul-de-sac streets, the private street at the end, near the open space area, whereas the common usable open space area identified as A. The 46 lots identified here distributed throughout the project site, and you have the best management practices, the biofiltration basin, A, at the northeast corner of Camino Largo and North Santa Fe. And then you also have the underground vault, stormwater identified as B, where the open space park area is located at the eastern end of the project site. This is the landscape plan, just identifying the fact that they are meeting the ordinance, the landscape ordinance for small lot development as far as provision of street trees, parkway landscaping, slope erosion control, and they're utilizing native as well as non-native materials to be able to conserve water. The architectural elevations, they're showing two-story residences, there are three different plans for each of the architectural styles, and they have a maximum height of 29 feet overall. The setbacks are being met according to the small lot development standards. The three exteriors that are shown here, the Santa Barbara, the farmhouse, and Spanish ranch styles, different colors, and variation in materials for each of these styles as well. So proposed floor plans, you have Plan 1, 2, and 3. Plan 1 is the, the smallest of them, at 2,129 square feet. These are four bedrooms, three bath houses. Nine of the lots would contain this Plan 1. At Plan 2, 18 of the lots would contain this type of plan, which is at four bedrooms, three baths, with the optional fifth bedroom at 2,236 square feet. And lastly, the Plan 3, 19 lots would contain this plan, which is the four-bedroom, three-bath, with the optional fifth bedroom, just a slightly larger square footage at 2,374 square feet. Camino Largo went through preparation of the mitigated negative declaration under CEQA's requirement, and it was available for public review for, from the period of May 11th through May 30th. We've received a total of five comment letters, and responses were prepared and included in, as part of the appendix, in appendices in the actual draft, the final, I'm sorry, the final MND document that's part of the record. So in terms of the general plan, development code, design guidelines, just to recap, the proposed density is at 4.95 dwelling units per acre, which is below the proposed of 10 dwelling units per acre permitted by the general plan. And again, the project does meet requirements of small development, a small lot development within the R1B zone. So tonight, staff is recommending for the, recommending for the planning commission to recommend approval to the city council of the mitigated NACDEC and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the 46 lots and homes located at 2123 North Santa Fe F. And also to recommend city council approval of the general plan amendment, the zone change, the site development plan, and a tentative subdivision map for this project of 46 homes. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. The applicant is here tonight, they do have a formal presentation that they'd like to share with the commission, and at your pleasure, they can either go straight into it, or if you'd like to ask me questions before that. Thank you.
Let's hear from the applicant first. Gabri, Jacobs?
It's gonna be me. My name's Arlene Tendick.
Very good, floor's yours.
Just a clicker, Patsy, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Patsy, for that thorough presentation. Hello, everyone, my name's Arlene Tendick, I'm the Community Outreach Manager for Cal West Communities, and and am happy to be representing our team today to share with you a little bit more about the project. CalWest has a long legacy here in North County. Um, the partners are Robbie Thorne, Dawn Fontana, and Greg Harris. Greg and Dawn are here today. Um, they've been building, living, and developing communities here in Vista for about thirty years. Um, in that time, they've built twelve neighborhoods for a total of about four-hundred homes. Um, the culture at CalWest is built on a commitment to build quality neighborhoods where people can establish roots and build equity. That ethos comes from the top-down and influences every neighborhood that we build. The project site is right on the county line and surrounded by an eclectic mix of uses and densities. As Patsy described, the site is currently home to Choice Nursery. The development footprint is primarily limited to areas that have been previously disturbed over the years by this operation. As you know, the city adopted a new smaller lot zone earlier this year. While single-family homes on small lots do exist already in Vista, this has historically been accomplished through condo maps and specific plans, as is the case with Sandalwood to our south. Patsy did a great job of walking through the nuts and bolts of the project. Um, so I'm gonna focus, I'm not gonna repeat all that, just gonna provide a little extra color on some areas that we wanted to reiterate. Um, it's important to note that although the streets will be private, they will be built to public street standards. Um, the minimum lot size for the smaller lot zone is thirty-six-hundred square feet. However, the lots at Camino Largo vary from about thirty-nine-hundred square feet to up to sixteen-thousand square feet based on locations. Um, also due to, we did some preliminary calculations, and ADUs would be very difficult, if not impossible, to construct on these lot sizes. The smaller lot size is a natural constraint to keeping prices down. Attainability was a huge focus for this team, and it was something that we kept front of mind throughout the planning process. The largest zones are along, or the largest lot sizes, I'm sorry, are along the areas that are adjacent to existing homes to the north that coupled with green screening and landscape buffers creates a nice buffer from our neighbors. This list summarizes the concerns we heard through conversations with our neighbors. Um, we're working to address these concerns through project improvements where possible. For example, the stormwater detention basins within the project will reduce runoff from the site, which will help with the flooding the surrounding community experiences and rain events currently. Um, the project will also widen and repave Camino Largo and maintain it in perpetuity. Um, those road maintenance costs typically fall to the surrounding neighbors. Um, lastly, right now, our neighbors on Camino Largo have to take their trashcans all the way down to North Santa Fe. And so we're working to be able to incorporate their trash pickup into our project as well, um, just to be able to help them out with that. A variety of water-wise plant materials are incorporated to provide texture, color, and visual interest. The landscape buffers around the project provide green screening and noise attenuation, as I remember, as I mentioned. Privacy and noise were issues shared with us by our neighbors. This section shows the proposed landscaping along North Santa Fe. Um, the slope treatment is designed to be consistent with Sandalwood, which is, as I mentioned, just south of us. Um, understanding that current zoning would allow for eight one-acre lots, unfortunately, that's just not where the need is in today's market. Um, much of the new housing being built today are townhomes or stacked flats. Um, very little is being done to meet the needs of moderate-income households. Um, so we are really excited to be able to be proposing single-family detached homes. Um, as Patty mentioned, Patsy mentioned, um, there are nine different elevations ranging in size from twenty-one-hundred square feet to twenty-four-hundred square feet. They'll all be built to meet or exceed Cal Green Building Codes. As I mentioned, attainability was huge for us. Finding a single-family home that's less than a million dollars in San Diego County is becoming increasingly difficult to do. And so keeping, um, keeping the prices in a place that moderate income, so about ninety percent of AMI to about one-twenty, um, so it could be attainable, was really important. Um, in addition to meeting with surrounding property owners, we also met with a mix of other community stakeholders. And what we heard was that some of North County's largest employers have a difficult time attracting and maintaining talent because of the area's high housing costs. Camino Largo helps meet the need for housing geared toward this group. In conclusion, we want to thank city staff for their time and collaboration. This project further underscores CalWest Communities' commitment to creating homeownership opportunities for families in a context-sensitive way. We believe our efforts resulted in a project that is compatible with the surrounding community, provides improvements to Camino Largo that address existing neighbor concerns, and aligns with Vista's need for quality attainably-priced workforce housing. As community builders and developers, we don't take general plan amendments lightly, and we know that you don't either. We request this zone change in this location, and we believe that it reflects the need to adapt to changing economic and environmental needs. We're really proud of CalWest's legacy here in Vista, and we hope that Camino Largo will be another place that people can call home. We respectfully ask that you recommend approval of CalWest's Camino Largo neighborhood tonight. Members of our team are here to answer questions, and we thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we've heard from staff and the applicant commissioners. Um, questions for either? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Patsy, is, are the parking requirements based on the fact that there are five bedrooms in almost all of these homes? Because we keep hearing potentially five bedrooms. And if there are potentially five bedrooms, there are gonna be five bedrooms. So that means additional parking. So is the parking requirements based on having five bedrooms in the majority of the homes?
Actually, it is not based on the fact that it potentially will have an optional or a fifth bedroom. The parking actually from the small lot ordinance says it's for parking spaces per house, per lot. Uh, that's what the requirement is. And we also asked in the small lot development ordinance, or part of that discussion when it got approved by the city council, was to have the streets wide enough so there'll be parking available on both sides of it. So in this particular case, it just so happens that the amount of on-street parking ended up being forty-six spaces, which equates to one per lot. And that's why the math is equating to be five per house, but that, that was not intentional on the staff's part. It was more asking for on-street parking to be available. So in fact, it could have been that it would have come out less than forty-six or maybe more than forty-six, but it just happens that it landed right on the same amount of lots. And that's the five per lot that you can drive at, basically.
So if you were to calculate the number of spots, parking spaces required, if you were to assume five bedrooms, then what has been proposed is sufficient?
That meets the requirements of the small lot ordinance.
Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, Patsy, um, it was mentioned that this went to city council. And now was that voted upon or was it just a recommendation to move forward with the application?
That was actually a discussion that the council had with the applicant, and it was publicly noticed so that members of the public could come and also be part of that discussion. Uh, but there is no formal vote. Um, and basically, the direction in that particular meeting, as I have the minutes here with me, was the council expressed support for the forty-eight, actually, homes that were presented at that time. Um, so they actually provided direction in that regard related to the general plan amendment and the zone change for that to move forward formally through the process. And that's why California West, in fact, went ahead and pursued that. Otherwise, they would not have been able to submit to the city.
Okay, another question. With the small lot designation, I believe the state still allows a junior ADU to be placed in the garage. Is that correct?
That is true. The junior accessory dwelling unit can be through a conversion of the garage space, correct, within the footprint of the home.
Okay. And does the junior ADU require an additional parking space?
The junior ADU does not, I believe, I'm trying to remember. I don't think it does, but needless to say, if they were to actually be converted, the garage space, those parking spaces would not have to be replaced.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Yeah, just a quick question. It might be for the developer's engineer. Um, the, it looks like a good job was done in terms of putting most of the slopes to be maintained by the lots that are downslope. You know, a lot of times when it's upslope, the person that has that lot has to maintain it, doesn't see it. So they're not gonna maintain it. So I guess my question is, all these downslopes that are kind of on the edge of the property that may face, there's not a lot of them, but that may face the neighbors, are those all gonna be maintained by the homeowners association?
I believe we have representative from BHA, the engineering company, the consultants that worked on the project, if...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Rod Bradley with BHA. We're the engineers on the project. Uh, there's an HOA exhibit as part of this to take care of those slopes. I think it identifies the slopes, a parkway, et cetera.
Yeah, it looks like that's the case. I just wanted to...
That's, that's the case.
Very good. Thank you, Rod. I had a couple of questions for the applicant. You mentioned sales price earlier. What's your target sales price for these?
I anticipated to start in the eight hundreds.
Eight-hundred thousand? Okay.
Great.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
You, all the units range from twenty-one-hundred to twenty-three-hundred. They're all two stories, four and five bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
How did you make that decision to go that big on these small lots?
Actually, I think this would be better for the home builder to speak to than me because I wasn't part of deciding that.
Why did you decide to put this type of wall on the middle of the lot?
Again, Rod Bradley with BHA. In the meetings that I attended, CalWest Communities actually did a project similar to this down in El Cajon that was very successful. Same concept with the houses, the sizes, the lots, almost identical really, except that these actually exceed the development standards that we had in El Cajon. But that was the basis of this. And then the whole premise for the whole project was because CalWest or part of the owners are from Vista, attended Vista High School and so forth, the idea was to come in with a project that people that attended Vista High, grew up in Vista, would have an opportunity after they go out, get their education, whatever they do, to come back to this community and be able to afford a house. So that was really the basis. And so the houses are the size they are because they want families. Simple as that.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Chow, when the, when the city received this application, did they, did you consider the vacant lots to the north and to the south, adding them to the proceedings for the general plan amendment?
That was not part of the consideration. Uh, we took, the staff took in the project as proposed by the developer. Uh, the properties to the north are actually in the sphere, so they're not in the city. Uh, and that would create requests for annexation as well. So that was not part of the formula in consideration at that time.
All right. Very good. I can, uh, we'll hold comments. Um, all right, Commissioners, any other questions of staff or the applicant? All right, very good. We will move on to the...
One more. One more question.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Garretson?
All right, I was a little late there, a little slow.
Yeah.
Uh, question for, for the applicant or for Patsy. Explain the isolation from the single-family home next door. Is there fencing? What's prevent people from these units cutting across those properties, going down to the bus stop? Or is there anything that isolates that, that protects those neighboring properties from, you know, people cutting across bicycles, et cetera?
Sure. There is a six-foot-tall steel tubular fence that goes around the perimeter of the project site. And then each individual homeowner lot will have a six-foot-tall white vinyl fence.
Commissioner Garretson, if you look at Sheet L3, just to add to that, there is actually a depiction of the particulars in terms of the different types of fencing materials on the perimeter of the project and as to what Ms. Tendick was referring to between the lots as well. So you can refer to that.
I just wanted to get that on the record for the neighbors. Thank you.
All right. No more questions from the Commissioners. Uh, we will open the public hearing, and the first, um, first speaker is Gabriel Jacobs, followed by Chris Jacobs.
Hello, my name is Gabriel.
Gabriel.
Uh, the development at Camino Largo is designed to maximize profit. I don't blame businessmen for trying to turn a profit. I do blame the city council for not holding him accountable by making him design a development that is characteristic of the area and amenable to the people already living in the area. If this development moves forward, it will be done so in contradiction of the 2030 general plan, specifically Goal 2. An examination of the area, you will find single-family houses on property an acre or bigger, representative of the surrounding area. Furthermore, the zoning of the area is different from the zoning of the would-be development. The exception to this is the nearby gated community Sandalwood. But even this community is vastly different to the proposed development. Homes in Sandalwood have property lots which are twice the size, on average, of the proposed lot size at Camino Largo. If the developments at Camino Largo are based on the metrics of Sandalwood, there would only be roughly twenty-four houses built. Camino Largo Development's desired zoning and plan to build houses so close together deviates from the characteristics and features of the neighborhood as well as deviating from the zoning pattern. Also, Sandalwood has two entrances and exits, one on Santa Fe and one on Taylor, which helps mitigate traffic, which you know is an issue. The Traffic Congestion Management Plan from January 2020 shows that North Santa Fe needs to be widened to two lanes in each direction. This issue has, has not been addressed and has only been further exacerbated by adding additional developments along Santa Fe. The one at Camino Largo will be the latest of these developments. Lastly, I am concerned with the behavior of city council, which appears to be working in collusion with the developers and giving them preferential treatment. A specific example is back in December of 2021, Camino Largo developers submitted that they be zoned as R1B. R1B requires lots to have a minimum of six-thousand square feet. The lot size for the development is thirty-six-hundred square feet. In May of 2022, city council voted to amend this, allowing lot sizes in R1B to be thirty-six-hundred square feet. Developers submitted plans which did not adhere to the municipal code, but instead of forcing them to adjust their plans, they were, they adjusted the code to fit their plans. This action necessitates an explanation, as to me, it appears to be malfeasance. The inability to follow the general plan solved the congestion issues on North Santa Fe. Fe, and conduct fair governance of the city, upholding the municipal code, leads me to doubt the competence and integrity of the City Council. I think if you allow this development to move forward as planned, you will prove that you do not represent the will of the people and be negligent in your duty as stewards of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Jacobs, followed by Michael Jacobs.
Hello. My name is Chris. I'm not going to cover what my brother talked about in terms of some of the general plan, but if you're looking at what the proposal is and you look at the general plan, specifically Lucigold Two, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight sections that it ignores or violates, specifically pertaining to the lot size and the community that lives in the area. You hear them talk about Sandalwood. I think most of the neighbors don't believe Sandalwood is part of our community. There is a large creek bed to the south of Camino Largo that separates us from Sandalwood, and I believe most of the community believes that we, along with the streets of Osborne, Hutchinson, Barsby, everything to the north and east of us, which are all relatively large lot sizes, and that is not what's being proposed. Specifically, and I made some, I printed some stuff out, if you guys want to see it, from the general plan, there is an actual picture that says "not allowed," and it shows a yard being subdivided into smaller parcels compared to the surrounding neighborhood. It's right there. It can be looked at. I would be happily to hand it out before I walk down. The Lucigold Three is to preserve and protect existing residential neighborhoods from actions, activities, or land uses that may have an adverse impact upon the enjoyment of the residential living environment. Again, there is no one who lives in the area that was going to enjoy having 46 new homes built in that location. I'm glad Mrs. Chow went over the background, because in December 2017, as she pointed out, there was a proposal for eight homes. At that City Council proposal, Councilmember Rigby stated that if the item is approved, it is for the project as presented, with the expectation that it will stay that way and the applicant will not come back at a later date with a different plan. He clearly came back at another date with a different plan. It seems very disingenuous of the City Council to then approve 46 homes a few years later, when he was specifically told that that wouldn't be something that was allowed. I'm sorry, I took lots of notes while they were talking. We're talking about traffic. Camino Largo right now is a private easement that allows access for two families at the end of the road. What they're talking about doing is widening that road and blocking the access that families already have. My family and the family that lives next to us has not been approached and told how our easement rights would be not restricted. Right now, if they widen that road, then our exit way is through one straight coming at us. They can't leave. Again, no one has talked to anyone about how that will be rectified. That road is a quarter mile long. Where they have a turnaround in their plan, it's probably, let's say it's half, let's say it's an eighth of a mile. We talked about 96 parking spots, right? If a car is 15 feet long, you have two cars per house, that's 1,400 feet of length when someone would want to leave through one exit point. 1,400 feet is a quarter mile, so you're doubling the length of the road that they have access to to be able to leave and get on to North Santa Fe. A development like this should have its own exit point. We're not arguing, at least I and my family's not arguing, that they can't put eight homes there, stick with the original plan, but they should also be using their own property as egress and exgress on the North Santa Fe, not a private easement that has already been established. Understanding that they do have reciprocal easement rights means that they have, they can improve the land, but what it sounds like they want to do is block the ability of some of the families to be able to use that as it's intended for us.
Mr. Jacobs, would you summarize?
Yeah. Again, I just, my summary is, the land, 46 houses, is not what is expected, and eight houses would be, and that using Camino Largo as an entrance and exit point is blocking the easement access to the families that live there.
Very good. Thank you. Michael Jacobs?
Hello. My name's Mike Jacobs. I'm the father of those two presenters that just came to you, and they sounded pretty good. We first moved to Camino Largo area maybe 30 years ago, and bought an acre of ground. I got an owner builder's permit and built the house that we live in. That was required by the Vista Fire Department to pave that whole entire quarter-mile road as fire access for us and for anybody else on that road, me by myself. Now, this company, sounds like a fairly decent company in many ways, but they want to take that road. They want to use it. Why should they use a road that we developed, that we have easement rights on? They can develop their own road, and they should. All that traffic coming onto Camino Largo in the morning and in the evening to get out is going to be ridiculous. We're going to have, never get out of there. It's already impacted. How many of you go down North Santa Fe and hit the area near Taylor or Osborne? It's full up on prime-time use. So whoever did the IA didn't go out there and sit on Camino Largo and try to get out it when it's rush hour. They said that's the main event to determine if it can be used or not. They should have their own exit, and I think as a planning commission, you should demand that they cooperate with the state, the county, and the cities and widen North Santa Fe. It needs it. It's a main artery for all of Vista, and this is a golden opportunity to make it functional. It's not right now. It's being impacted and it's be far worse with 100, what, 150 cars, morning and evening, coming down onto Camino Largo? It's a foolish plan. Thank you.
Phil Church, followed by Mary Colette.
Mr. Chairman, esteemed Council Commissioners. First, I'd like to comment on the city's effort to finally address my concerns about the sound system and operations in the hall. It seems to me, since the newest installation, it's no better than it was and costs a lot. But, you know, many of my points regarding this project have been addressed already this evening, so I'm going to spend a few minutes on a couple of different general points for consideration by your commission and by the city in potentially establishing more cookie cutter blueprint responses to some of the issues that came up tonight regarding ADUs, how many bedrooms, how many parking spaces, et cetera, that all cross over, that since our last general plan update, the state has felt inspired to change all of our numbers without complying to our general plan. I think Mr. Looney addressed the idea of what if someone does a junior ADU conversion in a garage? You didn't just add the resident of the ADU's car, you took the two cars that used to be in the garage and added them to the street again, et cetera, et cetera. One of my greatest concerns, and I haven't really followed this specifically, step by step, watching it go by me in the periphery, was the initial annexation for units. And I thought I had an interim number in there that was somewhere between eight and 90 that came and went, but the thing that concerned me was the annexation from county. What, if any, and I don't know if anyone has an answer, but to think in consideration of this project and future expansion outside the city limits, is what conservation and such overlays are there in the Sandag County, MSCP, MHCP, wetlands, wildlife, habitat? And when they're annexed from the county into the city, do those overlays come with them? Those are established protections for natural resources. If those were in fact applicable to this annexation, we have a blue line going right between this proposed project and Sandalwood, is it, I guess, on the other side? You can see it in the picture. There's trees, there's water, there's animals and plants, and mitigation would be one of the first considerations on a proposed development. I didn't hear anything about that, nor have I received back a response to my inquiry to fish and wildlife as to if that's applicable to this particular parcel. So--
Mr. Church?
Yeah. I'm wrapping. Thank you for what you do, and I have more questions than answers, always.
Thank you. Mary Colette, followed by Terry--
G.I. Gilman. G.I.L.M.A.N. Gilman. Sorry. I guess my G is illegible. My name is Mary Gilman. I live in, on Holly Drive in the city of Vista, just north of us, the property's become county, so we are property owners in the city of Vista. So I live closer to East Vista Way, just near Warmland, so my concern are, are many, but I object to the general plan change and to the zone changes because they would not be consistent with the surrounding properties, which are in that area mostly A1, one-acre lots. So the developer is requesting a five-to-sixfold increase in density that would really alter the nature and the quality of life in this semi-rural and agricultural neighborhood. I'm, as I say, a little farther away from there, and my concern is, of course, for traffic. Traffic has become so unbearable on East Vista Way. It's a huge bottleneck just getting out of, onto the main street and between the through traffic and cars going to and from the 15 up Gopher Canyon. So many of the neighbors use Santa Fe. We go intentionally out of the way to go through and on Osborne and over to Santa Fe to try to avoid East Vista Way, and now it'll be just as bad. So it's kind of like there's no alternate route for, for getting out of the neighborhood. So I think that the, the, the original, well, first of all, the annexation happened, and yeah, it would seem to me that the, the one-acre zoning that it was approved for is consistent with what is appropriate for the neighborhood, and we would suffer a loss of open space and natural habitat and just the feeling for the neighborhood by putting, you know, again, five or six times what is, is currently zoned on a small property with the ensuing issues of, again, crowding and traffic and just changing the nature of the neighborhood, so. So I think that that, you know, is pretty much it. And this issue of, I've heard this recently about these small lot zoning, I don't know what, what the intent of that is, but obviously sticking single-family, good-sized, 2,000 to 3,000 square foot homes on a, on a, you know, on a six or an eighth of an acre is just unbelievable. It's really, you know, again, inconsistent with, with, with the land use currently in the area. So, thank you for your time and--
And you're, you're Mary Gilman, right?
Gilman, yes. G.I., yeah. I, I know, I struggled with that G. Is it that--
No, it's fine. I, I found your slip. I was looking for Mary Colette, I think. There she is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, up next. Sorry.
I'm not sure what I'm going to say.
Pronounce your last name for me.
Mary Cottle.
Cottle. Okay. No wonder.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No, it's my fault. No, go ahead.
North Santa Fe is already ludicrous with the school down the road. People are not just double parking, but triple parking. You cannot even drive in the middle lane to get down Santa Fe when school's getting in or getting out, and I think adding another 46 homes to that area is just crazy. You keep referring to Sandalwood. I don't think Sandalwood is considered part of that part of town. It is, it's its own separate world. It's fenced off from everything else, and there's no way to get in there or out of there, except for those people that live there. They're, they're not part of our community. And as far as Sandalwood goes, when that track, I've lived there all my life, when Sandalwood was built, all the silt and stuff ran off from that property and filled in two lakes that used to run along that creek. So there's already been enough damage to that creek that runs along there. I don't think people realize its significance, but it also feeds the lakes down at Goheemee Lake, and I think by overbuilding and overcrowding more stuff in our whole area is not right.
Thank you. Terry Ardito, followed by Joseph McGregor, or Gregory.
Good evening. My name is Terry Ardito. First time doing public speaking, so I'm going to be reading, if you don't mind.
Right ahead.
My name is Terry Ardito, and I live at 219 Osborne, that is in the county of San Diego, along the city line. I have lived in Vista for some 60 years and have seen a lot of changes from party lines, don't know if any of you know what a party line is, to a four-story apartment building. My property is 3.74 acres, and it abuts the Camino Largo property. About three-quarters of my property abuts Camino Largo. Mine is the Horse Ranch, which is used by quite a few people, and they love to see us riding around, cars will stop and kids will wave at us, so that's the type of feel that we have in our neighborhood. This subject, this, the project, Camino Largo on nine acres, is currently zoned one-acre parcel homes, and the developer-owner is now wanting to change this to 46 single-family homes. Forty-six. My concerns are many, but let me cover a few. Privacy, because of where we're located, my closest neighbor is probably 600 feet away, and I will now have residents from Camino Largo looking in my back windows. That'll be fun. I'm also worried that they will start complaining about the flies, the smell, the dust, which we do our best to control. Many fly traps and manures picked up weekly. But this happened, I don't know if, you know, that Country Feed is our local feed store, and there's a development that went on behind the Country Feed store. Well, the residents started complaining about the roosters that they had for sale. So what happens? The city of Vista slaps on a cease and desist. They can't sell any more roosters. So what's going to happen to us, where we are? The next is the water. Have we forgotten that we are in a drought? And figure this, 46 homes occupied by four, maybe five residents now, how many times do they flush their toilets? How many loads of wash do they do a week? And whatever landscaping they'll have, they'll have to do some watering. I think we've really talked up the traffic situation on North Santa Fe, but it's, it's tremendous. The, the parents are dropping their kids off at school, and the kids are on, on-- The parents are dropping their kids off at school, and the kids are on each corner, and they're cutting across the street, and somebody's gonna get injured. One of those kids are gonna get injured. Then, the next one is the fire safety. In case of a 911 emergency call, responders such as ambulance, paramedics, fire engines, and police cars that are en route, and with the limited ingress and egress of this project, would make an emergency response very difficult. We need to have some way in and some way out. They need some way in and some way out. Most of all, we are equine enthusiasts and have a wonderful Gohomi Park that we can ride to. But now with the traffic on Osborne being so terrible, we are taking our horses and our own lives in danger crossing the streets. More and more speeding, crazy drivers rushing to work, to school, or just being crazy drivers.
Terry, could you summarize for us?
I am going to.
Okay.
Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you hear all of the comments that are being given to you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph McGregor, followed by Ryan Jacobs?
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Joe Gregory, and I live at the very end of Camino Largo. 50 years ago, I bought an acre of land on a two-rutted road all the way to the end, and I've lived there happily for 50 years. I raised my family, I raised horses, I raised cattle on the Gohomi Ranch. I've been there a long time. I understand that development is necessary. That's a beautiful piece of land. I used to have my horses there. That was my horse pasture. Guys, 10 houses is great, but 46 is freaking ridiculous. It really is. Give me a break. I'm trying to live out the rest of my life at where I am right now, and it's gonna be tough. Now, I know this traffic problem has been addressed. It's really nuts in the morning. You can't get across there. If somebody doesn't stop to let you in, you're stuck. What's it gonna be, 46 more homes? How the hell are we gonna get out? It's really tough. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, followed by John Simon?
Good evening. On Policy 2.10, the skyline ridge, if you build 46 homes in the proposed area, that will reduce the skyline that we all have right now. So, that would go against that policy that you guys have for the city. The next one would be 2.12, which is about the grade. The grade that they will be bidding on, building on will be more than 15%. It'll be much higher than that, especially with the showing you the side walls on North Santa Fe where they're gonna build their plants, it's more of an 15% grade there. You guys heard about the traffic. Again, I don't think anyone understands how bad that traffic is, okay? Especially during the school time, the cars park on Camino Largo. They fill up the road on Camino Largo. You build 46 homes, those cars will not be able to get out onto North Santa Fe. There will be no in or out access because of how many cars are either parked there or driving through North Santa Fe. It will be impossible to drive anywhere. Now, they said that this 46 homes is compatible with the buildings around that area. That is not true. If it's compatible, they would build one home per acre, two homes for an acre, maybe. That's 16 homes. No one's gonna argue that. But we are gonna argue something that is ridiculous, something that is completely taking advantage of the city council, the city, the neighbors, and anyone who lives here. This is pure greed. Greed that they wanna make money. Who's gonna buy these homes for $800,000? Not people who need homes, people who already have homes, people who already have enough. Not the people who actually need it. If they really cared about the people who needed homes, those homes would be priced for cheaper, for something that's actually affordable. $800,000 is not an affordable price for someone who doesn't have a home. The people who are gonna buy these homes are gonna either sell them, flip them, and change them for more of a profit. This is not for the city of Vista. This is not for the neighborhood. This is not for anyone but profit from these people. So, I hope you guys do the right thing.
Thank you. John, is it Simon or Simone? All right, followed by Arlene Tendick?
Hello.
Oh, that, I see. You got mixed in. Sorry. That explains that. John, floor's yours.
Thank you. Awesome job, everybody for me. I had 15 pages. They did my job for me, especially the last guy. I'm sure you've all heard of the term bait and switch. As I'm standing here, I feel like I'm a victim of bait and switch. The property owner adjacent to where this proposed development's gonna be was approached and asked for easement allowance, to use that easement, and that was for eight custom That property owner was not aware that it was gonna be increased to 46. So, again, I say bait and switch. The revenue obviously generated from this benefits the city and the developer. Doesn't develop, it doesn't benefit us homeowners. It will detract from our property value. I'm adjacent to Terry in her horse ranch. I'm right next to it. When they grade and develop this property, I will no longer have a view of trees, the skyline, and the adjacent area that's peaceful around me right now. I'll be looking at somebody's backyard bank, some flimsy fencing, a few trees, and somebody's bedroom window looking back at me, maybe 50 to 100 feet away. I moved where I moved at now to get away from that environment. Now, I'm gonna be put back in it when I'm getting ready to retire and forced me to have to go somewhere else for peace and quiet? That's not my dream or idea of peaceful retirement. In an email I got from Mr. Franklin back on June 30, he wrote, and I quote, "I've been working tirelessly to build enough new homes in Vista without turning Vista into a high-rise nightmare." So, you wanna bring that nightmare to our backyard? I say keep the high-rise nightmare in Vista, not my backyard. I think lastly, everybody said it pretty well, and that is that the demographics in the area are gonna change dramatically, not for the better, but for the worse. I do have a little bit of compassion for the developer. I know that everything has to change to some extent, but not to this extent. I'm happy with eight to 10 homes. I think all of us are fine with that. But if you can imagine a sardine can with a bunch of sardines packed into it, that's the environment these people are gonna live in, and that's gonna spill over into us. So, as was stated before, I wish that everybody would really take a good second hard look at this and rethink what we're planning on doing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Lee?
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. I'll make it brief. Most points have already been covered. What I didn't see in the presentation, and I don't know if it was presented at the May presentation for the city council, I didn't see an average daily trips. I didn't see any kind of traffic studies. I do live off of Osborne, and my property, or our property, would also back up to this development. We live, and elevation was not discussed as well. We live up higher on the hill, and we can hear everything, everything up off that valley all the way to North Santa Fe. So, this project is not compatible at all with the surrounding area, which wasn't addressed for those of us who live in the county, but directly adjacent to this property. I worked at Gohomi Park Academy, the school. The school was not discussed at all this evening by the people presenting for the property. The traffic is terrible there. It's absolutely terrible. And if you live on Osborne and you're trying to travel anytime between 7 o'clock and 9 o'clock in the morning or later in the afternoon, everybody's using Osborne and Hutchison for a shortcut. It's just horrible. Density, this is similar to the project that was discussed earlier this evening, where this just isn't an appropriate fit for the community. It's agricultural, and as my neighbor discussed about her equine property, we have bees, we have apiary. Bees can travel one to two miles in search of the stuff that they need to produce honey and keep their communities going. I don't wanna be shut down because I've got 46 people calling into the city about a problem with bees, okay? There are tons of proposals out there to annex parts of the county to the city of Vista. For those of you who are looking for the different projects, you can look up and down East Vista Way up to Mason Drive, huge, high-density projects that are being proposed to annex into the city of Vista. Please, 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 while you're looking at all of this, keep in mind the feel for the community. There's parts of the city for this, which this would be a great fit, and there's parts of this city and proposed future city limits that this is not a good fit at all. We need to keep agriculture agricultural. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ursula Sack. I am with guard, and I have pictures to show. Patsy's helped me with this, so she's been very kind. Okay. So, I am really sorry to say, but the MND that you're considering here just has a lot of misinformation in it, and it comes to incorrect conclusions. It states that this project would be compatible with the, like, land uses that already exist immediately adjacent to the site. Let's see. Here's a, standing at North Santa Fe looking at Camino Largo, and that is a nursery there. Those are trees. And next picture, please. And there's the sign, it's Choice Nursery, and it is still in operation. It's not true that it is no longer in operation. They are growing trees, and they store them there for future delivery to customers. Let's turn around and look west. We're looking at Gohomi Park. Beautiful, large, much-open space in that park. And the next picture, please. And this is a shot from the hacienda on Gohomi, Adobe there, and again, it shows that this is substantial open space. And the next picture, on the north and the, so this is, we were just looking at the west side, now we're looking at the north and the east side, and that's all single-family homes, large lots, average size, one acre. And that hill that you see there is the property in question, and that would be full of two-story houses on the top of that hill, looking down on the neighbors as others have mentioned. Next picture, please. The one exception to the one-acre lot is Terry's Horse Ranch, almost four acres, and it abuts the north boundary of this property. And somehow, the MND comes to the conclusion that this property shouldn't be used or zoned for agricultural purposes. I mean, how much more rural do you get? Horse Ranch. And if you, show the next picture, please. So, the horses go along Osborne Street, and you can see the trail there that they use, and in the distance is Gohomi Park. So, that's how they get over there. And next picture, please. And the city was kind enough to put up some horse-crossing signs at the signals there so the horses can get over to the park to ride there. Next picture, please. And here they are, they're making it across the street now, and they're gonna head down Osborne and back home and get some oats to eat, I think. And next picture, please. Now, this is the crux of the matter. This is the south boundary of this property. That's a creek. It's quite verdant. I only took that picture a few weeks ago, and it looks pretty nice there. There is a 10-acre property between Camino Largo and Sandalwood. Now, the MND says Sandalwood is immediately adjacent to this property. Not true. This is open space, it's protected, it's a creek, and Sandalwood, as someone mentioned, has no connection at all with the Camino Largo property or that part of town. Next picture, please. If you go down to the end of Camino Largo and looking south towards Sandalwood, that's what you see, trees, foliage. And the last picture is a little further down on Camino Largo, and I don't know if you can see, but way back in the distance there, there's a few red tile roofs. That's Sandalwood. So, what you have there is a natural and logical boundary between, or not a boundary, a space that separates the higher-density Sandalwood area from this property. It's 300, more than 300 feet along most of the way. Again, it's 10 acres. So, what you're being asked to do is approve a project that takes the density of Sandalwood, leapfrogs over this beautiful, natural piece of land, and puts 46 houses in a place that is completely incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, as you can see from the pictures we just looked at. And that's so inconsistent with the general plan, as has been mentioned. And so, we just need to say that this is totally inappropriate, and it violates numerous general plan policies. And the general plan also, as Patsy told us when the new housing element was done, that there is absolutely no need in Vista to upzone any property in order to meet the housing requirements. And the citizens don't want higher-density upzoning in Vista. That was what the people who talked to the committee that was working on the housing element made very clear. So, in summary then, what we're looking at, if this is approved, it's leapfrog, sprawl development, it's incompatible, it's wrong, it needs to be denied. Thank you for your attention and for the extra time. Mr. Chairman. And thanks, Patsy.
Thank you, Ms. Sack. All right, that's the last speaker's slip I have. Make sure you fill out a slip and give it to Mr. Russler.
I will. I got off work and came right away, so. I'm Tyler Martin, and I, I'm not good at things like this. I rarely speak in public, but I wanted to get involved in my community. There's a lot of things I've heard tonight that I just disagree with. I, I'm trying to buy a house, and the prices are out of control. And some of the things I've heard tonight just don't make any sense to me, like, we want larger lots. Well, that means a larger house. And a larger house means two, $3 million. That's not middle-class friendly. The general plan that was brought up, we have the general plan amendment process because the general plan should be responsive to the market. And right now, there's 40, 50, 60. They're gonna sell these homes like crazy. And it's not what they're charging, it's what people are willing to pay. And maybe I can't afford one of these homes, but whoever moves into this, if they move out of a townhouse or something, it provides more opportunity. And to some of your concerns about ADUs, I get it, but if you approve a larger lot size, that future landowner has more rights to build even larger ADUs. This project, as the applicant said, doesn't even have the This project, as the applicant said, doesn't even have the space to do it. So this is the guarantee that you're not going to get any ADUs. If you approve bigger lot sizes, someone's going to go in the backyard and build like a whole guest house, maybe. And so I just am asking you that there's a greater good out there and there is a population demand that's never been more high than it is today. Last year, in the San Diego Union Tribune, I just kept reading that the median home price was breaking the record month after month. Over half of the time, the median home price broke the record. And I'm just asking for the same opportunity and price-wise as what these people had when they bought their homes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Make sure you get a set speaker slip. They're out in the hallway. Anybody else? All right. I'm closing the public hearing. That's the end of public comment on the project. All right. And we'll open it up to Commissioner Discussion. Commissioner Looney.
Question for Amanda. The decision by City Council, does, do their decisions apply to the applicant or to the property?
The entitlements will run with the land, so they will be based on this proposed project, but the conditions of approval and entitlements will carry through to any future owner to the property, if that's what you're getting at.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, I would like to hear more about Camino Largo and terms of where the road will go, how far up, just to the property line, correct? They'll pave just up to where the, where their property ends and that will be it, correct?
If we, if I can refer you to actually the tentative subdivision map, there is a detail that identifies the improvement along Camino Largo. Camino Largo is actually, half of it is owned by the subject property owner, which is the northern portion of Camino Largo. The southern half belongs to the, according to recorded documents, and I'll have the engineer come up to further clarify this if needed. But in essence, the, the extension of Camino Largo as shown in the detail on the tentative subdivision map will be improved to a minimum width of 28 feet within the existing 56-foot wide private road easement. However, they're not looking to fully utilize the easement because it's not needed per their design, per the engineer's proposed design. And that will continue to be, remain a private street, allowing access to the 46 future homes as well as to the homes that are further to the east.
And there is no emergency exit, one way in, one way out?
Camino Largo will be the access for the project.
In and out?
Correct.
No, no emergency exit?
The fire department, the traffic engineering department all review the project and as it currently is proposed, is sufficient and meets the requirements of fire department access as well as engineering.
Because of the, the width of the street? Is that why they don't require an exit? Or beyond just the entrance?
Well, depending on the size of the project, depending on the capacity of the street itself, the, the appropriateness of the road and where it accesses, where it ends, all of that goes into effect when it's reviewed by staff. So they make a determination as to whether another exit or another entrance is required for the project. And in this particular case, Camino Largo is the access for the project.
All right. Another question about Santa Fe. What would require widening of Santa Fe?
It would be dependent on what the general plan identifies in the circulation element. And that would, would be what would dictate whether there's future widening or dedication or whatever would apply.
The traffic or the number of housing units don't come into play?
Of course they do. As far as traffic is concerned, yeah, that is all looked at. And in terms of the average daily trips, I know there was a comment made as far as what is that for this project? And it's basically 10 trips per home. So that's 460 average daily trips or ADTs. And that's what it's looked at. There was a local transportation study that was done and prepared by the traffic consultant, LLG. And they identified, after looking at the thresholds, whether it was level service, which is see Camino Largo and North Santa Fe, or whether it's VMT, depending on the thresholds per SB 743, there was no need for additional traffic improvements or additional related improvements related to the project anyways, other than what was identified as part of the project design.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
No? Sorry.
You gotta sit down. I told you the public hearing was over.
Right. And then they started to lie about it.
I, I will absolutely disagree with that. Ms. Chow speaks the truth.
We have paperwork that says that is false.
Then you need to talk to the developer and figure out what the heck's going on on your street because their map shows that they have access. Now, sit down and be quiet, please.
They have access, they have an easement, but they don't own the road.
You need to talk to, to the engineers and review your documents.
The city of Vista that declares what can or cannot happen in the city?
No. Stop. We're done. Go home.
Let's take a five-minute break. You can't do that, sir, really. You're hurting your clothes.
All right, we're back in session. I'm toiling with the idea of having the applicant's engineer come up here and explain the road to you guys. And but you have to promise me you're going to stay seated and you're going to keep your mouths quiet. Thank you. Public testimony is over. Rod, would you come and explain how the on the tentative map how the street is supposed to work? And Patsy, could you pull up the tentative map?
For the record, Rod Bradley with BHA. So maybe a section would be better. But anyway, so if you look at Comino Largo there, it doesn't really show well. But the property line between Mr. Marconi and Comino Largo project is in the center of that 56-foot easement. So there's an existing 56-foot easement that both of those properties agreed to record for the benefit of both of them. And it terminates with a cul-de-sac. It's hard to see. That's close to the Fourth Street down. And the reason why the cul-de-sac is not shown on that drawing is because the fire department because we're adding all these cul-de-sacs for fire turnaround, we don't need the cul-de-sac on the 56-foot feet, 56-foot road. The 20-foot easement that is enjoyed by the properties to the east is actually on Mr. Marconi's property. And it's improved at a variable width. It goes over a 42-inch water line that serves it's a transmission water line for the city of Oceanside. My understanding is that Mr. Jacobs improved that road as part of his condition to build his home. So there's a little misunderstanding of like, do we it's our road, it's not yours, that kind of thing. So that's it in a nutshell. He did he paved it as part of his home construction is my understanding. It's a variable width. We're going to repave it as part of our project. So you get a full solid road and then the properties to the east will actually get the benefit of using that road and an additional 20 feet on our property as it gets to our easterly PL. And then I think there's a lot in between Mr. Jacobs and ours that I don't I don't think there's a 20-foot easement over, but there may be.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, had we finished with your question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Grimm.
Yeah, I have some comments I'm going to hold. I just had a question for staff. The speaker from Guard mentioned that there's a stream that runs or creek that runs to the south in that property between this property and Sandalwood. I know we haven't had any environmental review on it, but Patsy, do you know whether that's like a blue line stream or whether it's it's something that would be environmentally protected? Sorry, I asked if it's a blue line stream or if staff knew whether it was something that would likely be protected or could be could it be developed? Or do you not have enough information on that?
No. Sorry. Thank you. Patsy?
Yes, Commissioner Grimm. In regards to the question, staff obviously did not look closely outside of the project site where you were asking about that particular stream, whether it's identified. I know the in the MND, nothing particularly was identified regards to that. But Helix Environmental is here in the audience, in case you would like to ask them directly as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, and I don't need a, you know, a steady answer. I just need a likelihood answer of whether that was, you know, that property is is protected. So if they're here, I'd be happy to to re-ask the question if I need to.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cara Palm with Helix Environmental. That drainage that they're speaking of to the to on the other side of Comino Largo was not part of our project site. So it's not studied as part of our environmental or MND, our biological technical report.
I understand that. I just thought maybe somebody with some experience could you can kind of look at it and think, well, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But I don't need you to speculate. So that's.
Yeah, that'd be speculation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You done? Okay, Commissioner Savage?
Yeah, I just had a question for the applicant. It was just brought up by a lot of the residents if it had been considered to go off into North Santa Fe. I don't know if that had been considered by your team.
Commissioner Savage, Rod Bradley again with BHA. No, we, as I said, the two properties agreed to have the 56-foot and that's our easement to Santa Fe. And that's what's proposed.
Just curious if it had ever been considered. I also was curious if the skyline came into the the planning at all, if the the ridges of the houses that had come into consideration with opposing views.
So if you look at the drawing or the tentative map, we've got the four cul-de-sacs. So the third cul-de-sac over are actually below the ridge line there. There's a couple of houses that are north of us actually look down. So our project pretty much is viewing to the open space and to the south. And then as we go back down, because Comino Largo goes up and then back down. So these the two roads at the end then are not on a ridge, they're in a lower area. But there is views as they indicated, they'll be able to see those houses. The other ones, they may not because we're below the grade.
Thank you. That was really helpful. And then just for staff, the easement, was that granted for eight homes? Does that play a part?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Grimm.
Yeah, I have some comments I'm going to hold. I just had a question for staff. The speaker from Guard mentioned that there's a stream that runs, or creek, that runs to the south in that property, between this property and Sandalwood. I know we haven't had any environmental review on it, but Patsy, do you know whether that's like a blue line stream or whether it's something that would be environmentally protected? Sorry. I asked if it's a blue line stream or if staff knew whether it was something that would likely be protected or could it be developed? Or do you not have enough information on that?
No? Sorry. Thank you. Patsy?
Yes, Commissioner Grimm. In regards to the question, staff obviously did not look closely outside of the project site where you were asking about that particular stream, whether it's identified. I know in the MND, nothing particularly was identified regards to that, but Helix Environmental is here in the audience, in case you would like to ask them directly as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, and I don't need a steady answer. I just need a likelihood answer of whether that was, you know, that property is protected. So if they're here, I'd be happy to re-ask the question if I need to.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kara Palm with Helix Environmental. That drainage that they're speaking of to, on the other side of Camino Largo was not part of our project site, so it's not studied as part of our environmental, or MND, our biological technical report.
I understand that. I just thought maybe somebody with some experience could, you can kind of look at it and think, well, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But I don't need you to speculate, so that's fine.
Yeah, that'd be speculation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You done? Okay. Commissioner Savage?
Yeah, I just had a question for the applicant. It was just brought up by a lot of the residents if it had been considered to go off into North Santa Fe. I don't know if that had been considered by your team.
Commissioner Savage, Rod Bradley again with BHA. No, as I said, the two properties agreed to have the 56-foot, and that's our easement to Santa Fe, and that's what's proposed.
Just curious if that had ever been considered. I also was curious if the skyline came into the planning at all, if the ridges of the houses, if that had come into consideration with opposing views.
So if you look at the drawing or the tentative map, we've got the four cul-de-sacks. So the third cul-de-sac over are actually below the ridge line there. There's a couple of houses that are north of us, actually look down. So our project pretty much is viewing to the open space and to the south. And then as we go back down, because Camino Largo goes up and then back down. So the two roads at the end then are not on a ridge, they're in a lower area, but there is views, as they indicated, they'll be able to see those houses. The other ones, they may not, because we're below the grade.
Thank you. That was really helpful. And then just for staff, the easement, was that granted for eight homes? Does that play a part in this decision at all?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question as far as the easement?
Yeah, and this is just for my own understanding, but the easement was granted when the property was planned for eight homes. I don't know if that comes into play. I know it was brought up by the public, and I was just curious if that, the change of the amount of homes that are going in, if that affects that.
And Commissioner Savage, you're referring to the 56-foot wide private road easement?
Right.
That was recorded on November 6, 2007.
Okay.
So that was before even the DA homes.
But with the plan amendment, I mean, that doesn't legally affect anything with the granting of the easement? That was before, and that's with the property, that came with the property?
That is a recorded easement unless it is rescinded or modified, it stays as is.
Okay. Sorry, just clarifying. That's it for me.
Okay. Very good. If I could talk to the applicant for just a moment? Yep. Normally, when we do general plan amendments, there's some additional public benefit that the city gets out of increasing density on people's property. The Vista Grande project that we did several months ago, we got improvements on warmlands in East Vista Way. And we were, my question for you is, I proposed that maybe the sidewalk from the Sandalwood project down to Osborne be improved. Is the applicant amenable to that?
Actually, we did discuss that with staff, with Patsy and John. And after going out to Santa Fe and looking at the utilities and the storm drain that goes underneath Santa Fe, we agreed to build a sidewalk up to Osborne, to the intersection. And then we're also going to do intersection improvements at Osborne to help with U-turns to, because we agree that with the opponents that it's difficult to make a left turn onto Santa Fe. There's a sight distance problem, and then, as they said, there's traffic issues during peak times. And so we're going to improve that intersection as well to allow for U-turns. So you make a right turn out of Camino Largo. There will be a sidewalk on our side of Santa Fe. And it's interesting that you even said that, is that I was out there one day at the site. If you look at the section across where the park is, it's asphalt berm. It's never going to be improved over there unless the city of Vista chooses to do it. So the only improvement's really going to happen on our side of the road. And there happened to be a handicap guy, and he's riding his electric wheelchair, and he's on the dirt, and he's, you know, he's all over the place. So it clearly needs a sidewalk to that. I don't even know where he was coming from, but that was our proposal. Going south towards Sandalwood, there's just a huge amount of improvement that needs to take place to get that sidewalk. And I'm not sure there's right-of-way either. We're actually dedicating on our property, but I think south of it, they're short on actual right-of-way. So there's just a little shoulder that could accept, I mean, I guess you could put an asphalt sidewalk within the current right-of-way without, there's some utility poles, there's a number of things that are there that we'd have to deal with.
Okay. I would think that would be a wise idea. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yeah, I think as everybody in the audience knows, it's an extremely difficult project. I agree with a lot of things that were said tonight that, you know, about rural areas and the, you know, we have to be careful that rural areas don't go the rat of the bald ego, you know, where they aren't available anymore. And, you know, the other side of that, of course, is that, you know, we have the state, California pushing local cities real hard to provide housing. And, you know, there's some question that came up tonight, whether this is an affordable housing, you know, not affordable, but is affordable to most people. You know, that's a question that you can argue. The other side of, you know, when I look at a general plan amendment, I try to look at something that makes sense from boundaries. Is it a major street? Is there a sharp hillside? Is there, you know, a major stream that goes through? Something that you can set your boundaries on. And one of the problems with this area, when I try to look at this area as a whole, is that, you know, you do have Sandalwood, and I understand a lot of, you know, you don't feel Sandalwood is part of the neighborhood. You also have the school, which a couple of people testified, create a lot of traffic problems. So you have some intrusion into this area already. One of the reasons I asked the question, and there's no good answer, rightly so tonight, about the stream, is does the stream make a good boundary, you know, between, you know, rural and higher density like Sandalwood? And I don't really have the answer to that. It's just one of those tough issues. It's, you know, you can kind of argue it both ways. I guess from my own standpoint, I would like to see, you know, you look at these lots, and some of them are pretty good size. And then you also look at the actual net area of the lots, and a lot of those lots are really pretty small. And I'm not sure about the discussions that went on with staff, whether there was talk about maybe making some of the lots, you know, larger. And, you know, I might ask staff that question. Was there much discussion about it? Is this the amount of units that the developer came in with initially?
That is correct.
Okay, so they came in 46. All right.
Okay. Commissioner Hastings?
When we talked about the small lot development in May, I have to say that my picture of where that would be applicable would be more in areas where we're looking for urbanization. Small lots tend to be in more areas that are categorized by urban development. And to me, that's not where this sits at all. So I have a real concern about that part. I don't think it's an appropriate application of small lot development. And from what I saw of the stream, it makes a pretty good boundary on that south side of the Camino Largo. So I'm uncertain about this project. I don't, as it stands, I don't go for it.
For myself, I'm really concerned about the unit size. They're 21 to 2300 square feet on small lots. They're going to be $800,000. And if I, I made the assumption the Sandalwood projects are, homes are selling for around $700,000. So you'd have to have an income, I think, if you spent a third on your mortgage, of $160,000. And I'm struggling with that tonight. So, anyway. The other thing that I was concerned about is lack of recreational amenities on the property. With this many bedrooms, the size of the units, small lots, I thought there should be at least a recreation amenity that would include a pool, maybe hard court, tot lot, and a dog run, if that's what we're going to do. So, anyway. Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Looking at the project, looking at the surroundings, yeah, again, I'm coming back to how I see the community. And I don't see the density of the proposed project being compatible with the existing adjacent properties that are much less dense. I don't see the lot sizes as being compatible with the existing larger rural property sizes. And I really don't see the preservation of the existing rural neighborhood in what is proposed. So I really couldn't support this application being approved.
Commissioner Savage?
Yeah, I just want to bring up that this property had originally been for eight homes, 10 homes. I think that something like this development is absolutely necessary in Vista. I mean, the average house price is $925,000. And, you know, people who have, you know, middle-class income, two earners who want to have four bedrooms, they need solutions. And I think the small lot size might be the solution. But again, we're, you know, we keep bringing back up that general plan goal number two was to represent the area that it's in. And I just don't see this representing the area. And this is right across the street from Gwahomi and the Gas and Steam Museum, and this is the rural part of Vista. So I really like this project. I think we absolutely need projects like this. I think we need this, the small, I mean, the small lots is something that we approved, or that we recommended, I believe. I just, I think this is in the wrong spot. I don't know if you guys have the capacity to develop, you know, less properties here. If you guys are interested in helping create something in a rural area, maybe smaller homes on larger lots. Again, we run into the ADU issue, but I just know that the product that I'm looking at right now doesn't represent the area it's in. So I just wanted to put my two cents out there, and I think this is something that Vista absolutely needs. I just think the neighbors and where this is, it's just, it just doesn't really line up, so.
Very good. So it doesn't sound like we're supporting the application tonight. And so we would need to follow the direction that we had on the previous project. And if we're going to recommend denial of the project, we need to come up with findings. The findings that I've written down so far are that the project is not, the project density is not compatible with the neighborhood. The project, somewhat the same thing, the project's lot size is not compatible. And that's where I'm at so far. Anyone else have a suggestion?
It does not preserve the existing rural neighborhood.
Okay. And it doesn't preserve the existing community.
It would also diminish the amount of rural zoning within the city as well.
Ms. Chow, are we good?
I was writing the comments down.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Would someone like to make a motion then? Commissioner Looney?
I'll make a motion to deny the application of P-210300 because of its incompatibility to the existing community and surroundings. With those four points dealing with density, lot sizes, maintaining the existing rural neighborhood, and there was a fourth point?
Charlie, your fourth point?
It was just that it diminishes the amount of rural zoning within the city.
Thank you.
And just one point of clarification, since this is advisory, we won't, the motion wouldn't be to deny, it would be to not recommend approval.
So not to recommend.
Commissioner Garretson?
I will second the motion with the amendments.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, it's been moved and seconded to recommend denial to the City Council. Please cast your vote. And again, a yes vote is to deny. And the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Aguilar still absent. So that concludes our public hearings for this evening. For the neighborhoods, stay tuned, this will be going on to the City Council. And we still have meeting to run, so if you'll exit quietly, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
You were okay with that one?
I'm going to give you the water bottle, and you throw it at me next time. So Commissioners, any comments for staff or reports to the rest of the Commissioners? Say none, Ms. Chow?
We don't have any particular items scheduled for August meeting, so maybe when John's back from vacation, he's probably going to come up with something, so. Yeah, he's overruled, I guess. Perhaps September 6. What I know is that we're planning to have a public hearing with the Commission on housing-related matters from the ADU to density bonus to SB9 to objective design standards. And so we expect that that's going to come pretty soon towards you. And then for decision, actually, for new regs, new requirements, so that we can clarify that in our code and for the benefit of the public.
Okay. Very good. I'm thinking maybe in that mix, we should maybe revisit the small lot subdivision. Didn't go quite as planned, I think, in its first application, so maybe a review?
There is another project in the pipe for small lot development proposal, which will come before you at some time in the near future. So I would say that probably wait until that project comes forward. We don't want to necessarily fix something if it's not yet broken.
Okay.
I would think that council will get the message, at least our message, may not agree with it, but our message when these projects go on. And then I think it would probably be up to them whether they wanted to.
That's true. And I guess if they hear enough from the community or concerns, I'm sure they might want to bring it back for their own discussion if necessary at that point. But I know that there is, again, in fact, a project in the pipe, so my staff's recommendation would be to at least let the project go through the process before changing anything at this point.
Don, did you have a question?
Yes. Amanda, could you re-explain the question that I had regarding City Council's condition of approval by saying this, that property could be developed as eight lots, or it could be brought into the city limits with it limited to eight lots? So you explained that it goes with the land, but does it change that decision when the new applicant makes an application for a new zone change?
So when it was annexed from the county in terms of the existing zoning?
Yeah, because the condition was that it could be annexed if it was limited to eight lots.
That was the condition?
That's what it sounded like.
At the time, the annexation was proposed along with the tentative subdivision for the eight lots, because we don't, the city does not entertain annexations without an actual proposed development. So it is correct that at the time, the City Council, the planning commission considered the project along with the annexation. But that does not impede somebody in the future from whether changing it or a new developer coming online or purchasing that land to. purchasing that land to propose something that is different, and, you know, it, it could occur over time with any development.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that comment, that it doesn't lock it in perpetuity to that zoning that was part of the project that necessitated the annexation at that time. Obviously, they'd have to go through a GPA, you know, process.
So what is the benefit to, let me say, to protect the property values of Vista? If I wanted to annex 100 acres, and I promised City Council that it's gonna be limited to 25-acre parcels, so it's annexed into the city, and then I sell it to Gary, I said, Gary, let's change this to 100 lots. There's nothing that prevents me from doing that?
It still would have to go through the, the approval process, so it's not a by right, you know, implication, but they could apply for that, that change. You're correct in that.
So then what, I'm just gonna summarize what I understand. The decisions that City Council make are really not pending, or they're really not long-standing with that particular piece of property, because there's always a way to circumvent it.
Well, I don't know circumvent.
Yeah.
There's a.
Plotify it.
Modify it, you can bring in a proposal, the guarantee is that they have to go through the public hearing process.
Exactly.
Both here at the Planning Commission and City Council, you know, so, yeah.
Wow. And it's only gonna get better.
I mean, if I could just enakle what Amanda was saying, I mean, there's a process, so it's not like they're gonna get automatically any changes approved, as they still have to go through the motions of the review, the public hearing, and support whether, whatever may be the decision level, which in that case, if the GPA and the zone change, obviously would rest with the City Council, but, but there is that process that's available.
You know, it's kind of interesting, too, that a number of people brought up the fact, too, that, you know, there were the, the, you know, extra units, accessory dwelling units, and, you know, that's kind of created a new aspect of the conversation, that, well, yeah, there's 15 lots, but there could be 30 lot, I mean, 30 units.
30 units.
30 units, so it's, what the state has done to us is really kind of changed, you know, the outlook on what the maximum density is.
Yeah, so then there you have all the legislative changes, the SB9 is the alphabet suit, basically, I mean, you have everything from A to Z, which is affording developers, land developers, et cetera, to do a lot more than they could in the past, and call it, whether it's housing shortage, or whatever you may call it, attribute it to whatever it is, is just what we have right now in the books, so, or continue to have more of it, I guess.
And in other agencies or other cities, the ADU does not count towards any lot coverage.
Oh, wow.
So, it's.
I just had this picture of the state legislators, having worked with them in the past in another state, they're earnest, they really wanna do good, and then they do this. It's like, oh!
You have more faith than I do, I'm not so sure about earnest. You wanna make it look like they're.
Not, not, you know, this is a wonderful topic, but if we want an agenda.
She's getting nervous. No. Patsy, the sheriff deputy seems to have left, if, if you have any contact with her, would you please thank her for, for showing?
I sure will. Thank you.
I needed to calm things down. All right, Commissioners, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned until September 6, unless John tells us sooner, so, and I'm, I'm gonna be gone the second meeting in August, so, okay. That'll work out.
Works out perfect for me.
All right. Unless John says so.
What is John, are we off?
Yeah.